Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Roseville City Council chambers tonight. My name is Pat Trudgeon. I'm the city manager for the city of Roseville. I'm really pleased to be here tonight to welcome in our one new council member and returning council member. As you know, we had elections this past fall, and we have election of Matt Bauer to his first term as city council and Julie Strawn to his second term. So congratulations to both of them. We are going to do their official oath of office here tonight, and they'll have their family members participate as part of that. I would say, before we get to the oath of office, real quick, that we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance, then do the oath of office. Each person will be able to say a few words of thanks to the community, and then we'll have everybody sit at the dais and do roll call. After the roll call, we will break, so you can get pictures, family members can get pictures, and friends and everything like that. So we'll break for about 10 minutes after that. So without any further ado, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. So first, we'll have Matt come on up with his son, Carsten, who will be reading the oath of office. I, Matt Bauer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of council member of the city of Roseville, Minnesota.
And discharge the duties of council member of Roseville, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you for everyone for being here tonight and participating, being interested in local government. We'll be discussing commission later on, so if you're interested, stick around. I wanted to sincerely, first of all, thank my family, starting with my oldest, Carsten, who administered my oath, and who was never tired about talking about local government. I do hope that helped with your U.S. history grade. Also, I want to thank my other two children, Andreas and Juliana, who understood why I missed their practices and games, and when I was there, understood that the drive home would be filled with phone calls, talking about parks, public safety, public works, and budgets. Sorry, we'll start listening to your playlist soon again. And most of all, I want to thank my wife, Stephanie, who, after some convincing, decided to let me run for city council. And once she decided that, was nothing but supportive, and always there, and always picking up the pieces in the family when I wasn't around. Also, I want to thank my supporters, who are always willing to help, be it door knocking, handing out literature, attending events, being in parades, or just talking with their neighbors, and sharing all their advice with me. It really, really helped during the campaign. Your passion and your Roseville meant so much, and I continually learn from all of you. And I thank you to council members and to the mayor, who are always positive and always available to share their experiences and to help me on this journey. Also, I want to thank all the department heads for taking time, explaining their departments, and making me understand the Roseville vision, and assisting in telling me about their challenges and opportunities. I'm very much looking forward to working with you. And to all the staff at Roseville, it means from day to day, you're the faces that people interact with, and you're a key part of what makes Roseville work. Without you, so much can't get done. Most of all, I want to thank the residents of Roseville, who elected me to represent them. It's been such a privilege to meet so many of you during door knocking, during those events. Your stories about Roseville, your visions for it, and all the things in between are a key part of what makes Roseville, Roseville, into such a wonderful place. I'm deeply humbled to be elected and look forward to productively serving all of Roseville in collaborations with my fellow city council members. Thank you. Next up, we'll have Councilor Julie Strawn come on down, and she'll be having the oath of office administered by her husband Frank and sister Katie.
I, Julie Strawn.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Of the state of Minnesota. And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
That I will faithfully, justly.
And impartially.
And impartially discharge the duties of...
Council member of the city of Roseville, Minnesota.
Of the city of Roseville, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I want to say a special thank you to the folks who I invited to join us here today. I had not intended, as many of you know, to run for a second term, but I put my name in, and at the end of the filing season, there were no women and no people of color, and I really wanted to save space for those folks, because our city has so much more that we have in the future for us. I want to thank my sister, Katie, my sister-in-law, Linda, who lives in Roseville, my husband, Frank, and my family, who are my back of the scenes, who do all of my extra work. But this time also, I had Phil Norcross, Phil Blackbird Cross, Gina, Todd Anderson, Chelsea and Noah, who are here today, as well as many others, Rick and Sheri and Kathy, who are here, who are my kitchen cabinet, Josh and Molly. They say that, and I thought, what's a kitchen cabinet? But what it is, it's those people that, when you've had a really great day, you want to rejoice with. And when you've had a really rough night, they're the people who console you, who, on the way home from that meeting, you're like, oh, my gosh, I'm so frustrated. They're the people who get you to come back and do it another day. And Sheri knows that pretty well. Sheri's been my phone call on the way home many times. I want to thank you all for being here and for being my support for the reason that we keep doing this work, because today I had, I saw, not to diminish the Bible, but to show the importance. I swore my oath on the conscience of a liberal by Paul Wellstone, because I really believe in that we all do better when we all do better. And that's why I get up and I do this work. When we all do well, there's much less to worry about. And so that is my goal every day, and why I stand here, and why I come to meeting after meeting, when sometimes I don't feel like I'm seeing a lot of progress. But it's a collective good, and trying to be fair. What happens on County Road B happens on County Road C, and happening on County Road D, that everyone knows that I will try to be the most fair. Katie knows well, my mom always said, "Life isn't fair." And today is the third anniversary of our mom's passing. But because of that, I really work hard to make life fair. And so I want you to know that I'm going to try to give the same to every person that walks in this door, and every person in the city, all 37,000 people. And so when I come, I feel like, you know, that I'm going to make it fair. I'm going to try to give equal access to everyone, and that if it worked for one person, it worked for these people, and that everyone knows I'm going to be treating them as much as I can the same. I also am really proud of our work on the Equity Inclusion Committee, and that's really important to me, that equity, that radical hospitality that we bring to this community. And I will continue to fight for that, that every person feels like they are someone who is involved and has equal acceptance into what brings us to the city. So thank you for your election. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your belief in my ability to do the job for another four years. Thank you very much.
So as I mentioned, we'll go up and do some roll call, and we'll take a break for some pictures. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. You're more than happy to. We do have some refreshments. If you aren't going to stay, please take one home with you. And so thank you again for being here, and we'll conduct our business.
All right. We're going to do a roll call. We want everybody to be here.
All right, fine. I thought we were doing pictures.
Not quite, that's okay. All right. Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, January 6, 2025. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Groff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Row.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end, as always, and city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who you've seen a lot this evening on the other end of the dais, on my left. And we have other staff who will be participating in the meeting, and they will be introduced as the meeting goes forward. As I always do at the start of the meeting, I'll remind folks, if you have a cell phone, to silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And I think at this point, then, we'll go ahead and take a recess for some photos, and then reconvene in a little few minutes here.
Okay.
Now. All right, we're back from our short recess here, returning to the regularly scheduled meeting for tonight. So we did roll call. Consideration of the agenda is the next item on our agenda this evening. First of all, as always, I'll check with the city manager, Trudgeon, to see if there are any changes from a staff perspective on tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes by staff.
All right. And then, second, I'll check with council to see if there are any changes from a council perspective, or items council members would like removed from consent for separate consideration. It does not appear to be the case. We also do want to check at the start of each meeting if there are people here in the chambers for the items, or any of the items, in Section 11 of tonight's agenda on the second page, which is called the Consent Agenda. There's a couple handfuls of items there that are usually pretty routine business, and, you know, we don't anticipate that the people usually come for those items, but we always do want to check at the start of the meeting in case somebody is here for one of those, because we can take up that item earlier in the meeting so that they don't have to wait to the very end. So we will certainly have an opportunity for members of the public to participate in the earlier agenda items as they come up. But once again, this is just a check-in. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak or ask a question about an item in Section 11 of tonight's agenda? It does not appear to be the case, and that's perfectly all right. With that, then, we have the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve that?
Second.
All right. It was moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff. It's my first meeting back after a long break. I still have to get the sense of who makes the motions, but we have that motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for tonight. Next on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. As agenda items come up during the meeting, we will have opportunities for comment on those items specifically, but at the start of each meeting, we do want to make sure we provide an opportunity for general public comment. This would be a chance for members of the public to speak about items that are not on tonight's agenda, but may be related to city business or of interest to people in the community. And so we do provide that opportunity, as I said at the start of each meeting. This would be a perfect opportunity for folks who are prepared to speak on a non-agenda item to come on up. And for, as always with public comment, we just ask folks to introduce themselves as they begin their remarks, and state their address or street for the record, if they're a Roseville resident, and address remarks or questions to the council. We may not always be able to provide an instantaneous response if it's a question or concern, but we will certainly attempt to provide some sense of what the addressing of that question or concern might be, if that's what people are speaking about. But I don't believe that's what the first speakers this evening are speaking about. This might come under the category of interest to people in the community.
Can we do a display of a flyer?
Sure. If we can get over a camera, it might be, there's kind of a lighted area on the table. Yeah. There we go. And you can feel free to slide the microphone out of the way.
There, great. Thank you. Hi, I'm Kathy Ramont, 1161 Loy Road West.
I'm Barb Bergseth, 14671st Way, Fridley. I'm also a member of the Roseville area optimists, and Kathy and I are here today to talk about a new collaborative project between Do Good Roseville and the Roseville Optimists. I'm going to talk about the why, she's going to talk about the what. The Roseville Optimists believe that character development is essential to a civil caring community, and created the Character Develop Initiative. It's led by Roseville residents, Monty Johnson and Bill Farmer. The mission is to build an inclusive, caring community. We're working toward this mission with different areas of the community, like education, business, faith, and civic service and youth-serving organization. We know that Roseville is a community where caring actions happen year-round, but also wanted an event that all the different groups could participate at one time. Roseville Cares is this event, and it's being held February 1 through the 9th, and the purpose is to spotlight caring actions in the community and inspire others to care it forward. Now I'll hand it off to Kathy to talk about the what.
Okay, great. Well, this is very exciting, and Barb and I met and we're talking about what we would want to do for this. And we understand that the high school has a charity week, where they all, they pick a charity that they all support. And we thought, well, let's build on that, and let's extend it to the broader community. So it came up with Roseville Cares, and Roseville Cares has two parts to it. As Barb said, it's going from February, Saturday, February 1 through Sunday, February 9. And on February 1, we're kicking it off at the Family Service Fair at Abetu Tetsha. Oh, sorry, I can't look at that one. And a Family Service Fair, it's from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, and it's a free event, and it's a series of hands-on, service-oriented projects, really designed around kids doing projects, like painting rocks, doing letters to service members. There's like, we're still working on it now, we've got seven or eight projects right now. So it's a great event to start out and kick off that event and get families involved in service learning within the community. But then, the idea is that from the 1st through the 9th, what we want to do is see, get as many people in the community, book clubs, city council members, department members, you know, faith communities, Girl Scout troops, anything, as many people as we can involved in doing projects within the community. And it's more like our community members doing projects, they might not necessarily be in Roseville. But to that idea, the reason, one of the reasons we do that is, because I think, really believe Do Good Roseville is that people want to do good things, but they, A, don't know what to do, and they always say, "We'll do that next month." So we're giving them a target, February 1 through 9 is the time to do that. And with the what, we have already curated a list on our website. We've got 42 different projects that people can choose from if they want, or they can do something outside that, but that's just to get the creative juices flowing. It could be anything from a collection, doing a collection of shoes, or hygiene products, or other different types of books collections. It could be a task, so it could be doing cooking somewhere, it could be cleaning somewhere, painting project, doing some other type of project to support an organization. And then there are also events, like there's one that's Fishing for Life, is Ice Fishing for Veterans Day. So you can go out and go fishing, ice fishing with a veteran. Or there's a polar plunge, if you want to do that one. You know, I'm not signing up for that one. So we're really asking, what we really want to do is get, you know, we don't care what people do, we just want people out in the community doing good things. And all we ask back is, we'd like to know what they're, if a group picks a project, what they're doing, and then give us some pictures so we can share that. So we just want to, you know, start the new year with some caring, caring records, caring activities within the community.
And if you're going to post your photos, use the hashtag #RosevilleCares2025.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening and for this effort. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll be sending up the city council for the polar plunge shortly.
New council members.
Yeah, only the new one.
All right. Any other public comment, general public comment this evening? All right. Well, thank you. Great. That then brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is recognitions and donations. We have one item under that category this evening, which is the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Day proclamation. So I'll read the proclamation, and then a motion from the council to approve would be in order. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Roseville recognizes and honors the work of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the chief spokesperson for nonviolent activism in the Civil Rights Movement, which successfully protested racial discrimination in federal and state law, and whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was jailed and arrested numerous times for speaking out against racism and discrimination, and for trying to help African Americans to, specifically to register to vote, and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in December of 1964 for his efforts, and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated on April 4, 1968 because of his fight for equality and civil rights for all, and whereas an act of Congress of the United States in 1983 declared the 3rd Monday in January to officially honor Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others?" And whereas each year, Americans across the country answer that question by coming together on Martin Luther King Day to serve their communities and neighbors. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Roseville hereby declares January 20, 2025 to be Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and urges all citizens to join together and honor Dr. King by committing to volunteering in the community.
It's all moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I would just note that it's very apropos in light of the event that was just announced that could almost be said to be in conjunction with that as well. The timing is close, but that's exactly the spirit of Martin Luther King Jr. Day and broader efforts in the community. With that, we have the motion to approve that proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We have a number of business... We have a number of business items to take up, some of which are very routine, first of the year items. But our first item this evening is a little bit less routine, and we're happy to have with us this evening our Public Works Director Jesse Freihammer and our City Engineer Jennifer Lowry, who will introduce this item related to a petition on the County Road C Ramsey County Project that's under planning and preparations at this time or has been for some time. With that, I'll turn it over to, I believe, first, Mr. Freihammer to introduce the item.
Let's see, presentation.
Obviously, we're all a little rusty after the long break. Yeah, I think we've had some technical updates in the chambers, too.
I think we did today, yes.
Yeah, should be. So all we see is the desktop on the screen. We're not, is the presentation up on the laptop but not on the screen?
Yeah. Try, is it over there? Looks like it's hooked up to another computer. Yeah. We were just saying. It's not from my trip.
Next one.
Lost the screen now.
Do you want to take a short recess to see if we can get it figured out? All right, why don't we just take about a five-minute recess here? On.
Did you have one for speed?
All right. So we're back, back from a short recess here. We've addressed the technical difficulties. We promise we'll get it better next time. With that, once again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Freihammer to introduce this item before us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this presentation's kind of in response to petition the council did receive in November. So we did kind of put together a quick presentation. We're going to go through it relatively quick. This is a little bit of a summary of what the county presented this, well, last year, I guess now. Now we're in 2025, so I'll just do a brief update on the overall project and then get in kind of to the details of what the petition was about. I don't know. Maybe. All right. We're going to do this.
Strike it over there.
Look, it's the wrong one.
Just do full screen.
All right. Now we're working. All right. So overall, the County Road C project, this is a county-led project that the overall length actually goes from Lexington Avenue to Little Canada Road. Projects within Roseville just extend to Rice Street. The overall, the main scope of the project is a four-to-three lane conversion. So currently, it's a four-lane road would be converted to a three-lane. This is similar to what the county is doing on Dale Street this year. The ultimate road would look similar to what Lexington Avenue looks like currently. It is a pavement rehabilitation project, so it will be done in conjunction with a mill and overlay. There will be some additional enhancement with ADA improvements, where we have pedestrian improvements, signal modifications at Rice Street and at Lexington Avenue. There is an intersection study going on for the Victoria Street Crossing. Currently, it is going to, it is proposed to be a traffic signal. And then there's also plans to modify the bridge over the railroad track. But that, the actual construction of that would be done as a separate item at a later date under a different project. There's a chance it could be with this project, but they're looking to get some federal funding for the bridge. So most likely it'll be like a phase-two project. So the existing roadway section is a four-lane road. Currently, there is just a sidewalk on the south side of the roadway. The proposed new section would just add that center-left turn lane and then the, kind of convert the outside lanes to a shoulder. The shoulder would be marked as a bike lane. And then there is a proposed multi-use trail just on the north side, just between Western and Rice Street, which is one of the items we'll get into a little more. So the overall goal of the four-to-three lane, it's really a safety improvement. It's designed to reduce speed, create safer crossings for pedestrians. A major factor in that is you only have three lanes of traffic to cross instead of two. And then especially if you stop, there are pedestrians trying to cross. If one vehicle stops, it's a little, it can be blind to the other person who's doing it. So it really is a big safety improvement. And then there's less options for people to pass each other, so it does tend to create a little slower speeds. It does improve the flow of people and vehicles in the community and then increases bicycle safety by providing at least a spot for bikers who are comfortable riding in bike lanes. So the layout, I didn't include the full layout in here, but the, this layout does give a general idea of what the overall layout will look like. Other than the pathway, which is, like I said, just between Western and Rice Street, the center-left, the road will be converted to a four, a three-lane road with a center-left turn lane. Like I said, similar to how Lexington Avenue looks today with a, with a shoulder that would be marked as a bike lane. The portion of the petition was concerned about adding the pathway on the north side. So it's currently proposed to be an eight-foot bituminous pathway, which would be similar to what we have in other parts of Roseville. And then the south side currently has, I believe, a five-foot wide sidewalk. And then there is two mid-block crossings that were proposed, one between Virginia and Farrington, and the other would be between Matilda and Galt here. So just real quick on project schedule, so preliminary design, this has been ongoing since about the fall of 2023, into last year. The county does hope to wrap up the preliminary design, so based on some feedback from the council, that'll help determine what the final design would be. But then they do hope to get into final design in 2023, acquire any right-of-way that need to, any, secure any permits, and then develop a cooperative agreement with the city. The construction, I didn't put up there, but construction is planned for 2026. The county, in conjunction with the city, did hold two open houses on this project. The first was on May 21st, actually in the council chambers. And then the second meeting, since there was such good turnout, we actually moved it to the oval. And that was October 16th. So petition had two items that were identified as issues. The first was to eliminate the mid-block crossings. So from the city's perspective, the, the, the mid-block crossings aren't justified. They are an additional safety element that can be added to a roadway. It's really just an opportunity to kind of give an, use another tool in the toolbox. It's not the end-all. It's not going to solve all the problems, but it's just another tool to help pedestrians cross the street safely. You can't do these on a four-lane road, but with the center-left turn lane, there's an opportunity to use some of that space to create a pedestrian refuge island, so you only have to cross one lane at a time. It is easier with the roadway getting converted to a three-lane road. You only have to look one, you only have to cross three lanes instead of two, but you still, or instead of four, but you still have to look two directions at a time. This allows you to cross one way, stop in the middle, look the other way. So a lot more comfortable if you're a slower walker, maybe have children, stuff like that. It's also a more visible crossing. The crossing does stick out if you, if you drive the ones we have in Roseville or ones that are just outside the city. Instead of just having the signs on the center of the road, you have signs in the middle of the road. So it will capture your attention a lot more. Should make it easier for motorists to realize you have to stop and yield to it. Not that they're not supposed to already, but a lot of people don't realize when people are at a crosswalk, you are supposed to yield to the pedestrian in the crosswalk. So this does help enhance that visibility a little bit. It is a traffic calming measure because it is, it does make it more visible. Like I said, make it more likely people will stop. And then you still can cross at the intersection, even though we are trying to encourage people to use this, you still can cross an intersection. Any intersection is a legal crossing per state statute. As I mentioned, we already have a few of these in Roseville. The city has one at Old Highway 8 near Sandcastle Park. We have one on Terrace Avenue near the Twin Lakes Trail we did a few years ago. The county installed, we have one on Rice Street, and then the county installed some on Larpinder Avenue a few years ago. On Arden Hill, in Arden Hills, just north of Roseville, on Hamlin Avenue, there's two of them. And then we currently have three proposed, or three that will be under, should have been built this year, but that project got delayed on Dale Street. So there'll be three that will be constructed in early spring of 2025. And this is just an example of what that crossing and the signage would look like on Dale Street between Belmont and Eldridge, kind of near the entrance to Villa Park over by the Beedale Club. And then, as I mentioned, this is just pulled out of state statute. So pedestrians have rights in absence of a signal. So basically, any intersection is an unmarked crosswalk, and by state law, motorists are supposed to. So like I said, even though the crossing is going to be marked and enhanced potentially in the mid-block, residents still can cross, or pedestrians can still cross at the intersection. Petition issue number two was to eliminate the proposed pathway on the north side of County Road C between Western and Rice Street. So from the way the city looked at this, this pathway is specifically taken out of the pathway master plan. This segment has been the pathway master plan for as far as I saw going back. In the pathway master plan, it does, just call it as a sidewalk. Specifically, it calls it as install a sidewalk. Typically, staff more recently has been going away from directly just doing a sidewalk. We already have a sidewalk on the south side, an eight-foot bituminous pathway. Sometimes it's actually cheaper to build, it's easier to maintain, and then it's much more multimodal than a sidewalk is. And certainly in this case, with the right-of-way that we do have, it is feasible to construct a pathway. So that's why it's been proposed to be a bituminous pathway instead of a concrete sidewalk. Overall, it does provide better connectivity to the neighborhood. There's a lot of north-south streets and it connects them. So if you're going for a walk, you don't need to cross the south side of County Road C to walk through, you know, to the east or west and then walk north. Again, you can stay on one side of the road, so it eliminates crossing, unnecessary crossings if you don't need them. And then it also provides better connectivity to the park, especially if you enhance that with a mid-block crossing. We have similar parallel pathways on other major collector roads that are over 4,000, which the city has recently installed. So a lot of these are on Lexington Avenue. And that's kind of reflective of what's in the pathway master plan. The goal is to put pathways on these larger-volume roads on both sides of the roads because it is much more problematic to cross them or walk along them due to the traffic volumes. And as I said, this really meets a bunch of those transportation goals and policies and standards within that pathway master plan. It is segment number five on the pathway master plan, so this is actually the sheet that shows it. And then the other segments are actually 4A, 4B, and 4C, which that's kind of speaking to doing the duplicative pathway on both sides. But five, we kept, when the pathway master plan was updated a few years ago, five was kept separate because it was formally identified specifically as a standalone project prior to the update. So 21, 21 pathway master plan, that was the last time this was updated. County Road C was, from Western to Rice, as I indicated, was on the pathway master plan list or the preference list. It is pathway segment number five. When you do the priority ranking with everything, it is actually segment 31 of 79, so it's not the top rating. But typically, what the city has been doing on past projects is doing these projects when the opportunity comes up. When we have developments come up, even though it might not be the top-rated project, we still want to do them because the time is right. It tends to save money versus doing it as a standalone project, you know, five years later down the road. So we've done this similar to, on Victoria Street, Lexington Avenue. County Road B, a lot of times they're not the top priority. I think the projects that's been the top priority still has not been built because it's so expensive. So, so that's just a kind of a summary of where it is on the pathway master plan. And then kind of goals and standards. So these are just some segments or some verbiage that was taken directly out of the pathway master plan, so, or the 2024 transportation goals. So coordinate with decisions with local governments. Obviously, we're working with the county on this project. Create a sustainable transportation network by encouraging more efficient use of existing roadways. This overall project does meet a lot of those goals. It's converting a four-to-a-three lane, making it a little more user-friendly. And then obviously, the addition of a pathway will help further do that and encourage use of non-motorized transportation. Anytime we're adding pathways is making, it's easier for pedestrians, easier for residents and visitors to use the system as needed. And then policies and location, or standards. The location provide facilities along all roads, so the, develop a pathway network along all arterial roads. Like I said, that speaks to doing that on the larger-volume roads. Like I said, Lexington, County Road C, County Road B, where we've added parallel ones. Strive to complete pathways along arterial roads and regional trails, both sides. And then as part of road reconstructs, explore the feasibility of adding or upgrading pathway facilities, both on or off-road. So some of those goals are meeting that by adding the bike lanes on the roadway, but the addition of the pathway certainly enhances that as well. So with that, the requested council action would be to, a motion to approve the County Road C layout, including the pathway and crossings as shown. And certainly, we could have alternative motions removing the pathway segment or removing the mid-block crossings or both. I will say, if you don't have the pathway on the north side of the road, it doesn't really do any good to have the mid-block crossings because there's nowhere to connect it to. So that, you kind of have, you need one to do the other. So with that, that's the end of my formal presentation. I can certainly open it up to any questions that the council may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freihammer. Appreciate the information. Are there questions from the council clarifying any information that's been presented or questions that may not have been addressed in the presentation? Councilmember Strawn?
I always hate to be first. Thank you for your presentation. Is parking allowed in that area that's designated as a bike lane?
No, there'll be no, there's currently no parking allowed on County Road C. There will not be any.
There'll be no change?
No, no change.
Do the bike lanes, as presented, as a possibility, do they conform to the bike master plan for the City of Roseville?
So the bike master plan has not been adopted, but it is currently in the proposed draft version of the bike plan.
Okay. But in that, this segment is part of that?
Correct.
Can you speak to the impact of the overall project as it, as it indicated from Victoria all the way to Little Canada Road if this particular section were altered to amend, to, to conform to the needs or requests of the people involved?
In terms of remove, if we remove those two elements?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if we remove the pathway, then I guess we'd have to look back at the pathway master plan and consider if, if the whole, if that whole site, the entire County Road C corridor needs to be looked at differently. You know, certainly the long-term vision would be to put a pathway on both sides. We've currently only looked to do this segment. A lot of it was due to, it was specifically called out as a specific project. That's why we highlighted the area we did. To do the entire segment would add significant cost at this time. The city already has a lot of other pathways planned in the near term with Hamlin Avenue projects or a Lexington project next year, Hamlin projects the following year, and potential other, a potential project on Victoria in the near term as well. So we kind of have a lot of eggs in the basket. We didn't want to overcommit and that would jeopardize funding because the city's portion of the funding is typically municipal state aid funding for these projects, and our share for the pathway is typically 50% on the project. Certainly, if the mid-block crossing element goes out, that's, that's, you know, really a safety enhancement, but it's certainly an opportunity. The county is obviously supportive of adding these. We've added them already in Roseville. And, you know, if we don't add them now, I think it'd be a lot harder in a couple of years if we get requests to do them similar to what they look like on Dale Street. County is going to say, hey, you guys blew, you missed your opportunity. So it's a chance to do it with, with a larger project.
And just my last question is, what impact of the city input put is there on the county's decision to move forward?
So certainly, we, when we kicked off the meeting, we're following the pathway master plan. So I think if we say, no, we don't want the pathway, I think the county will follow that. And I think that would obviously impact the mid-block crossings. There's no need for that. The mid-block crossing, it's, if we move forward with the pathway, obviously, the county is going to support that. If we make a recommendation against the mid-block crossing, ultimately, that's a county decision on what to do. It's their crossing, their whatnot, but they will probably, I'm guessing they would take that input, but ultimately, it would be their decision. So there's a chance they could. Because it is their crossing, they're legally responsible to. Because it is their crossing, they're legally responsible to provide a safe crossing, so.
So they could end up doing it anyway?
They could do, they could end up doing that, but I would, I would guess they would tend to lean to what others are.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Shore?
Yes, thank you for bringing this back and reminding me about some of the detail. If we took out the mid, mid-lane crossing, would we save money on that as a city?
I don't believe so. So we haven't gotten to the details of the cost participation, but on the Dale Street project, we are not paying for, the city is not responsible for any of the costs related to the Dale Street crossing, the three pedestrian crossings that are going in there.
And so the part that we would be providing funding for would be just the path?
The pathway and any right-of-way associated with the pathway, if that was the case, or really any right-of-way on the corridor. But really, our, the city's main cost on this project would be just the pathway costs.
And that would be 100% our cost?
50, typically, it's about 50-50 is what the costs end up being, split between county share and the city's share.
And is that because they're doing this whole segment or is that just in judgment?
So if, just because we're doing the project or have we petitioned to do the project like the project we're going to do on Lexington Avenue this year, that's kind of city-initiated, regardless of who initiates the project, it's, their cost-share policy is pathway improvements are split 50-50 with the local agency.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Graff?
I noticed that there would be addition enhancement for ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. Could you talk some about what those would be on this project?
Yeah, so the main thing would be any existing pathways that are on the corridor, like the sidewalks on the south side, they would be upgraded. A lot of those ped ramps, pedestrian ramps are probably not up to current code or were installed incorrectly back in the day. So those will get upgraded with truncated domes, make sure the proper slopes are on. The existing crosswalks that are at many of the, or crossings at many of the locations aren't up to, aren't proper. For example, the crosswalk that is currently in front of the park, I know one of them goes into a driveway, so that's really not a legal access. So stuff like that would be corrected, but it's really mainly the pedestrian ramp and then also get the signage up to proper. The other improvement would be, the traffic signals that would be installed will have the pedestrian, the APS buttons. Trying not to do acronyms, I can't think of the name, but the push buttons with the audible pedestrian signal buttons.
Yes. And the pathway on each side would obviously be more convenient for someone in a wheelchair.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, any, anything to reduce, you know, crossing spec, I said, especially if you don't want, you're not going to the park, you just want to go from one block to another, you don't have to cross anytime you have parallel pathways. It's, it gives the opportunity for shorter distances.
Thank you.
Other questions? Follow-up, Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. Do we know what the average speed of County Road C in that segment is at this time?
One million miles per hour.
It feels like it, if you're on a bike.
I don't know what it is currently. I know it's posted 40, but I'm sure it's above 40. The new speed limit with the modification, I believe, would be 35 miles an hour. So the speed limit would be reduced. The county's been doing that on most of their four-to-three lane conversions, but I, I know the county has the data, I just, I don't have it in front of me.
It's come up at meetings too, but I don't remember what it was.
I do know, I'm not sure, is there a path on the south side all the way from Lexington to Western?
All the way from Lexington to Rice?
Correct, all the way from Lexington, all the way from, well, it's kind of on, it's, it goes through the park on the Lexington side. So it's technically on the north between Lexington and Victoria and then transfers to the south. You can make an argument that going through the park, but that's on the south side of the railroad tracks, is on the south side. But all the way from Victoria to Rice Street is a sidewalk.
Okay. I do know that if you are not on through traffic, there's no way to get over to like transit across, like you have to kind of get into the traffic on a bike in order to turn left because that lane isn't on the right side. So I do know that there would be a need for that bike lane and that center lane in order to cross over to the north of that, just having taken my life into my own hands, given the sightlines on that particular intersection. Then I just wanted to do that, is there enhancement of the ADA crossings at these mid-lane, or will the ADA accessibility and standards be withheld at each of the corners as well as that mid-block?
Yeah, anything that would be built would meet ADA standards.
Okay, thank you. And then just wondered if we had studied an equity impact for renters or others who maybe might utilize this space?
I mean, certainly, any pathways benefit everyone, especially those who don't use motorized transportation. So should be an overall benefit to everyone.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Some mid-block crossings have flashers, some do not. Are you aware what the county is leaning towards in this case?
So currently, the county is not proposing to do those rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Those typically are much higher volume crossings, like we have at Central Park. It's something that could be added later. Sometimes it's, once you have the crossings and if you have pathways on both sides, it might encourage more people to cross. County Road C might be considered a barrier to some people right now and they're not doing that crossing. They'd rather drive to the park instead of crossing. So it could be something that could be added later, but the county does have a pretty firm threshold on when that would actually get installed.
I had a couple of questions too. First of all, on the mid-block crossings, the other examples I'm thinking of generally seem to be places where there aren't a lot of cross-streets necessarily, and so there are long gaps where, where there's nothing that would be perceived as a crossing, and this seems to be a little different than that. Can you talk at all as to if there is sort of a policy difference in this location as opposed to other places where we've done the, or planned to do the mid-block crossings?
And that's, so it is, let me just go back to, so the one it's most similar to is actually the one that the county's going to be doing on Belmont to a degree. You know, certainly, it is, it is, some of the other ones are a little different because they're really long blocks, so it kind of doesn't matter where you put it, it ends up creating mid-block crossing, but it does have the effect of enhancing the crossing and shortening the crossing distance. Certainly, you could also put these at an intersection. The problem is with the location of the intersection in, on this segment of County Road C, you would prevent the left-hand turn. So we didn't want to restrict, working with the county, we didn't want to restrict left-hand turns, say, onto Virginia, or for that matter, into the park. Because sometimes you'd only have a, if you can eliminate one direction, you can put it on the other leg. But in this case, the only way to put these in, if you want to do them, is in the mid, middle of the block. And that's kind of what we'd worked with up on, between Belmont and Eldridge. If you put it like at Eldridge, then you'd be restricting into the park. So it's kind of similar to what, what the county did there. Trying to specifically think of the other ones. And I guess it's, it's kind of similar to what the, some of them on Larpinter Avenue, there's crossings there. They're a little slightly different because some of those are three-legged intersections, which three-legged make it a little easier because you, one turning movement, you can relocate it closer to an intersection. So it is a little different, but the, it's not unprecedented. I know the county, like I said, the Dale Street one, I know on Hodgson and Shoreview, they've done the same thing for a location. They chose a mid-block location because it's the only spot you could do it versus not doing it at all, so.
Yeah, and I did look at, I noted that on the east side of the intersection with Matilda, because there's no entrance to the park there, you potentially could put one at the actual crosswalk at the intersection if you wanted to provide a little more enhanced protection at that location because there's no left turn westbound into the park property. That would be about the only spot in that area that if, if you wanted to locate a more sheltered crossing at an intersection, that would be, you know, you wouldn't interfere with that left turn action there because there's no left turn south.
Correct, that could be. I think what, if I think, if I recall the discussion, one of the concerns was it was so far to the middle of the park and it wasn't directly, it didn't connect in a very good spot. It's making it so much further. So that's why the, they kind of chose the middle one. But yeah, I agree. It could be not.
I imagine there are people that cross at Matilda to get to the park right now. Okay. The other thing I wanted to, and I'm trying to remember my other question, but while I'm working on that, I did have a question. So we talked about how we like to try to do pathway projects, even if they're maybe a little bit lower on the priority list on the Pathway Master Plan when they coincide with projects. So say we didn't do the pathway on the north side of C on this project, do you have a kind of an idea of what the timeframe would be for the next path, the next pavement rehabilitation on that section of County Road C after this project gets done?
So typically, if the county's doing a mill and overlay, it's going to be 15 to 20 years before we'd be, the county will be back to look at the project.
Which in some senses is forever and in other senses is next week and depending on how you look at it. But that's good to understand that timeframe too. So this doesn't preclude it for 50 to 100 years. If we don't do it now, it's more like unless we do a, you know, not coinciding with the road project.
Yeah, I mean, we've certainly done a lot of those projects where the city ends up being the lead on the project and doing it. There's just a little more cost. I mean, right now, the, any curb getting repaired is, it's, there's a little bit of cost savings by doing it as one project instead of a separate project. And then obviously, if you delayed it a few years, you'd be impacting people twice in some cases.
Right. And then my final question I did remember was, I believe if I remember right, in this section of County Road C, the average daily trips is something in the neighborhood of five or 6,000?
Yeah, it varies between, I think the, the one count directly in front of the park is like 5,600 vehicles per day, so, but yeah, five to 6,000 cars a day.
And I'm thinking about Lexington. I think Lexington is like between 15,000 and 20,000, depending on which segment you're in, especially south of B.
Yep, but we, yeah.
So there is a differential there in terms of the, the traffic count. They're both above 4,000 as a threshold, but one is quite a bit more above that than the other, and so that enters into the thought process a little bit, at least in my mind here too. So I wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Other questions from the council? We certainly do want to have public comment. We're still going to do that, don't worry. Councilmember Strong?
I note that priority two is County Road C, parenthetical A. Can you speak to what area of County Road C qualifies as priority two in the Pathway Master Plan? Yeah, that one.
I don't have it directly up, but it's, I'll just, it's got to be a chunk on the western part of Roseville, because I know we went A, B, C.
Well, 4A is between Lexington and Victoria, it looks like.
That's 4A, but this is...
4A.
Oh, it is 4A. Yeah, there you go, sorry. I misread that.
It is 4A.
Yep.
Is there any chance that we could piggyback on that and, piggyback on that and for any cost savings to be able to adjust this area at the same time we would do other modifications?
Well, I just, I should point out that I had looked at this this afternoon, and so for A, B, and C, and actually D also, but primarily A, B, and C, talk about constructing an on-road pathway, either standalone or in addition to what's already there.
Yeah.
So it sounds like what they're doing in this project with the shoulders may qualify as on-road.
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, thanks for the reminder. So 4A, B, and C is the basically on-road pathway, which the bike lanes actually would do, would meet that. Like I said, the other part of that is also kind of related to having pathways on both sides, which is a little deeper into the plan. But yeah, that would speak to that. The, yeah, like I, that was my thought.
I was going to add, 4A includes the bridge as well. So the reconstruction or the redecking of the bridge had conversations of widening those pedestrian facilities as well.
That was kind of a not yet.
Yeah, it won't be yet, but the, the bridge, as Jennifer indicated, would be designed for pathways on both sides. The county would be upgrading the bridge to actually, I think they're, they're 10-foot wide pathways, basically to give the option of either facility. Because the current bridge is way substandard. I don't even know if we have four feet on, on the bridge currently.
Danger.
Okay.
I just have one last question. Just wondering, can you speak to the concern about the owners of the land adjacent to the north side of County Road C as far as the easement or right-of-way that is owned by the city in that situation and what they're just concerned about this impeding on their personal property? And I know that there is an implied easement or right-of-way in this situation.
So the, County Road C, the county owns the right-of-way or has jurisdiction over the right-of-way. So I believe there's approximately 20 feet of right-of-way on the north half of the road to construct any improvements. I know there's a lot of utility lines and whatnot there as well, so it is under county jurisdiction to use as needed. It's technically not part of the lot unless the county would vacate that back to the property owner. So the county certainly has the right to construct a pathway. Certainly, if they needed easements to go on private property, the county would acquire those. With 20 feet, it should hopefully be minimal easements if needed or temporary easement, stuff like that.
Is that recorded from the center of the roadway or is that from the edge of the roadway?
So when I looked that up this afternoon, it's approximately 20 feet from behind the curb. It's not an exact measurement, but there's, it's a wider right-of-way than, than normal because it was obviously a plan to be a county road back in the day.
And what is the proposed, this project on the north side, what, how deep would that go into that 20 feet?
I think it's a five or six-foot boulevard and an eight-foot trail. So I think...
Yes, so 5'8", so 13, so theoretically, it's five to six feet at least behind the...
So the preliminary plans, they, the county is trying to determine what those like grading limits would be. And then as they get in a detailed design, it'd be tightening that up and adjusting grays to try to minimize that or adding some curb on the backside of the trail to eliminate that. But I don't believe there was any expected permanent right-of-way needs thus far, where they're added in the design at least.
Yeah, and that, if this moves forward as a pathway, the, those final design stuff would be, the county would determine that and work on all the details on exactly what that cross-section would look like. Because like, as Jennifer indicated, it can be modified to save an encroachment if need be.
In other words, because of the fact that there's a little bit of a slope from the road curb to the property right, you know, that is owned by the property owner, there may have to be adjustments made where the sidewalk is raised or lowered or, like you said, a curb on the backside.
Or a short retaining wall or, or a short, short curb can be added. We did a lot of that on the, on our County Road B project west of Roseville to minimize the impacts.
And handle drainage, et cetera.
And just in terms of, I know the email we got from the resident that had those concerns, you know, certainly, absolutely, units of government can build, they could conceivably build the roadway right up to the edge of that if, if it was needed for transportation purposes. That's why counties and cities have those rights of way. But the idea being is, you know, we try to, try to minimize impacts and not be, that would be like a six-lane road. We don't want to do that. The other thing is, is that certainly if people are concerned about, you know, the people walking on the sidewalk and using the sidewalk or the pathway, there's, there's sort of different schools of thought on that, and we've experienced concerns about that on the B2 pathway as that was being looked at, on Fairview Avenue as that was being looked at. One perspective is that from a safety point of view, you know, you're getting more eyes on the property and more eyes on what's going on in general, and so that can actually be considered safer. Certainly, if people are concerned about people sort of venturing onto their property, especially if it's fairly close to the home. I know people sometimes do install fences. Obviously, that's the property owner's decision and cost in that case. But that is one, one solution that's out there, and I'm not saying that, you know, we're going to make people do fences or whatever, but that's, that's just kind of part of what goes into the, the consideration of individual property owners on what's going on next to their property too. So we understand that. I think it is probably appropriate here now to, after making everybody sit through all of our discussion, to receive some feedback from the public. Certainly, we've got the petition and it's fairly straightforward, and hopefully, the discussion up to this point has helped folks with understanding of what we're talking about and some of the questions that we as a council have as well. I just wanted to, excuse me, note for public comment, because I don't think I mentioned it in the prior sort of rules of the road for public comment, in addition to having a seat at the table and addressing comments and questions to the council and saying your name and address or street to begin your comments. The other piece of it was the three-minute time limit, which I wanted to let you know. I will try to be gentle on, but you can actually say quite a bit in three minutes as well. And if your primary purpose is to say, I agree with what previous speakers have said, that can be done very quickly. So that's all right too. And if you're just here to find out what's going on and you don't have anything to say, that's perfectly acceptable too. We're not going to come down in the audience and like, like fill down here with a microphone and force you to say something. With that, we'll open up the public comment. The only thing I'll add, while our first speaker comes up, is if there are a lot of people that want to speak, certainly as somebody is saying their remarks, feel free to come up and sit next to them and be prepared to start at the other microphone. And then if there's, you know, two people and you want to be the next person, you can certainly sit in one of the, the front row seats and be queued up for speaking next. And I promise, the final thing I'll say is that if your name is a name that we might not know how to spell very well, once you're done with your comments, you can step off to the side, there is a clipboard and a pen there, and you can just spell out your name so that we can make sure we get it right in the official record. And with that, I will turn it over to our first speaker and welcome you for your comments this evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My name is Greg Schrader. I'm a retired civil engineer, and also from 2002 to 2005, I, I was a city council member for the city of Roseville. Right now, I'm a volunteer Santa Claus. Got to do what you got to do. I'm here to express mine and our neighborhood's concern with the proposed County Road C project inclusion of the mid-block crossing and the eight-foot-wide-by-two-minute-trail path, and I hopefully, I'll show you why you shouldn't do this project. One thing I'm going to say before I get too far into it is, it needs to be said, is that I am really surprised that this section of road is still in the bikeway or the pathway plan for 2012. Back in 2000, there was a proposed project to build a sidewalk on the north side of County Road C, and that was eliminated, and we thought that it was also eliminating it from the master plan, but obviously staff did not follow through and delete it from the master plan. So there shouldn't even be one there in the first place. How do I know this? That's the reason I ran for city council, was to defeat that project. So, very personal to me. With that in mind, I'll, I'll still go ahead and do my quick presentation here, and, and hopefully that kind of sinks in, is we shouldn't even be talking about this. This shouldn't even be on the agenda anyways in the first place. But I want to express my opinion and my neighborhood's concern with the proposed County Road C project inclusion of the mid-block crossing and the eight-foot-wide trail. And again, I'm going to try to show you why. And please excuse, I didn't have the time to put a real slide presentation together. The top one is a cross-section of County Road C as it is now, with the four traffic lanes and a sidewalk on the south side. The county is proposing to leave the sidewalk in, build, have three lanes in the middle with a bike path on either side in blue here, and a proposed trail along the north side. It was indicated that the right-of-way is 20 feet along this area. Again, that is in error. You will have to buy right-of-way at a few properties. I can't tell you how many. I know of, I identified two. I'm a civil engineer, I can go out and measure things pretty easy and understand how they go together, but I know of two places alone that there's only 10 to 12 feet of right-of-way behind the curb line. So you're going to be buying property from people, from our residents, to construct this project. This is an aerial view of the project, you saw it in the slide, and I can't find my pencil, but that's, I guess, normal. There we go. This is, this is Farrington, Matilda, and Gaultier. The red line going across, as you saw earlier in the slide, is the proposed eight-foot-wide trail with the, this yellow line, which you probably cannot see, is these five-foot sidewalk. These are the mid-block crossings, and the traffic lanes are in the middle. When I was walking around, talking to the neighborhood, the residents on Farrington indicated to me that they would continue to use, to cross County Road C at this intersection. There's no way that they would walk down this pathway, cross here, and come back and go back into the park. They would just not do it. It's just not feasible. Same thing with the residents on, on Matilda. They would come down here, they will continue to cross as they legally can and get to the park. However, they would not follow this pathway all the way down here, cross at this mid-block crossing, and come back to get in the park. Same thing here, they would not go this direction to come in. It's just redundant. Why would you do this?
Mr. Schrader, you're at 3 minutes and 51 seconds, so I ask you to wrap up in one sentence if you can.
Well, to be honest with you...
Your most important point.
Mayor, if you'd be honest with you, staff took quite a bit of time, and I think I should be allowed to prevent what I think I'm representing the neighborhood to be. I'm representing many people that I've petitioned for to, to stop this project, and I should be given that right to talk as, as long as I need to. I will talk for another five minutes and that would be it.
I'm not going to give you five minutes, but I'll give you another 30 seconds.
Well, thank you very much for not, for approving this project and, and saying that I can't do anything. It was brought up, again, that... You just tied my hands. Thank you very much. You just tied my hands, I can't even pronounce anything. I have gone out to take a petition, I got an area that... I'm going to talk about two things, two little things, I'll take two minutes to talk.
You can have my three if you need them.
Okay, no, there we go.
I do want to point out, we have the information in the petition.
I know, but I'm trying to...
We have an understanding of what it is, so it's not...
I understand that, I'm just trying to present some additional information that I didn't present before, and that's what I was going to do.
Please get to that, and then we'll, you know, we'll be able to hear it.
As I said earlier, this project, the county project with the two bike lanes and the center turn lanes, actually creates three safety zones for pedestrians across the intersections where they are. They, pedestrians can come out now, they, they can stay behind the curb before, now they can come out and they can get into the six-foot-wide area, they can identify traffic oncoming, and see if they're going to stop, where if they're going to be able to cross. Then they can cross into a safety zone in the middle, and then do the same thing as they cross the road. So the project itself, without any trails, without any mid-block crossing, will enhance pedestrian crossings on County Road C. Okay, that's one of the items. The petition, I, I talked to you about that before. I have two little things to talk about. And you may ask me, why am I showing you a picture of City Hall and County Road C? The reason I'm showing you that is that I, let me get my notes here. And I apologize, you really got me going good here. Back in the year 2001, 2002, the county and the city reconstructed County Road C between Hamlin and Lexington Avenue. During the approval of this, of this project, it was agreed that the trees and island concepts should be used to enhance other locations along County Road C as they are reconstructed. One specific area identified was Acorn Park between Farrington and Gaultier. This is back when I was a council member. The construction of the islands in the center of the road with trees, other vegetation, plus planting trees along the south side of County Road C would enhance the area and tie the neighborhood to the park. So it's, this is something else that should be thought of and should be done as it was thought of back in the initial park. And my last item is this intersection of, of Gaultier and County Road C. This intersection has been, has not worked since it was originally built. It's the county, the park entrance is here, traffic has a hard time entering and exiting this, and we've been putting, I should say, you guys have been putting center-line pedestrian crossing signs here. They are getting hit, they're getting rolled over. I find them in my yard. So it's like, we need to do something for it. And this project, County Road C project, is a, is a, is a enhancement that can be capitalized by the city if they would go ahead and, and try to modify this in conjunction with this project. Those are my two issues, other than what I presented before. I am very frustrated in the city council right now, to be honest with you.
Well, I want to say, I appreciate your insight and information. It is a challenge sometimes when you have a lot to say in the three-minute timeframe. I'm certainly not here to try to take people's right to speak away...
You did a good job of it.
...or to tell people how to do it, but I, I also want to be respectful of that everybody should be able to follow the same rules.
I've asked a lot of people to come here and voice their opinions also, and I, I think that I should have been allowed a lot more time, to say the least. This project should never go forward. It should not even be, the pathways and the mid-block crossings should not be done.
Thank you, you've had your time this evening. Appreciate that.
My name is Brenda Osterland, and we live at 2660 Matilda. We moved to this area just less than two years ago, my husband Mark and I. We are thrilled to be in the neighborhood that we're in, and really appreciate the park. I'm concerned, when you're taking this pathway, how much you're going to take of personal property. I'm not a civil engineer like Mr. Schrader, but, and it appears, just from me looking as a person, I don't know what you're going to do with all those utilities. A lot of this stuff, there's transformers, there's, you know, light poles. You could use some more lights along the way, by the way, but that has nothing to do with this project. But I, I just want to say, I agree. I am against that pathway and those mid-crossings. I cross at Matilda frequently and do not have a problem, and if you're going to add in those three lanes to make it go, that would work. And whatever time I have left over, you can attribute to Mr. Schrader, so he doesn't look like he's over so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Good for that generosity. Hello and welcome. And you certainly don't need to bring the microphone closer, they'll adjust that in the control room. That's easier, less for you to think about.
Good evening, my name is Ron Koner. I live at 2872 Marion Street. I also am a retired civil engineer. You're plagued with those, I guess. And, and what I have heard here is, and I've been in my location for 54 years, I've lived there. What I've heard is a lot of discussion, good discussion, on how to do this. What I have not heard is why. That whole area to the north of County Road C is residential, from Rice Street all the way to Dale Street. And there are two reasons, in my observation, for people needing to cross County Road C. One is the residents want to get over to the park to recreate, and second is, there's limited parking there for the ballgames, the little kids and stuff, and so people park on the residential streets, and so they need to cross for that. Those are the two major reasons. Why do we need a mid-block crossing? That's, there's nothing there. If they're going to a street where they're parked, they're either on this end of the block or they're on the other end of the block. So think about why we're doing this. There doesn't seem to be a lot of sense put into this thinking of why we're doing it. If you want to get people into Roseville, I appreciate the, the lady talking about bicycles, but a lot of people in Roseville are gray hairs, are approaching that, that area. We're limited in how often we're going to be riding bicycles. You need to move traffic and people through Roseville and County Road C is one of the, the primary ways. If you start narrowing it down with bicycle lanes, that's just going to, in my opinion, throw down, also putting in the crosswalks, putting up little spots where the traffic is going to have to potentially stop for people crossing because of the state law. So I think you really want to think about, why do we need to do this? Because there isn't any reason to be crossing mid-block. We've got a crossing right now, as, as was noted, and they keep putting up little, in the middle of the road, signs and things, and they keep getting knocked down by the traffic, so it, it hasn't really worked. To, to put in more of those, I, I think is really a problem, and I would definitely be against this project.
Thank you. Hello and welcome. Oops, yeah, if we can slide that microphone a little further from the chair, that'll help with showing the...
I'm Duane Stenland, 2687 Matilda Street. I don't feel any need, or in particular, it's not solving anything. There's no problem right now on an east-west movement, you got the sidewalk, and having the, something on the north side for east-west does so. The problem is north-south movement. And I live in Matilda, I cross into that park all the time, and there's no curb cut. You just trip over a curb and hope to get into the park without death. It is a raceway, you're probably well aware of that. I'm opposed to, I work for the Department of Transportation, I'm opposed for more block space. This doesn't meet what I'm going to call context-sensitive design, it doesn't meet climate resiliency, it's just more black batuminous, more surface water to discharge. So in particular, I like this map, this is crazy. We're all lazy. People actually drive to go to a place to exercise, they won't walk there even if you're a block away. So the point is, I know, I've heard twice now at least, we're going to go on Matilda Street and go straight across. The shortest path to two places is the short path. And the big issue is playground, or for the baseball. And they too are in a rush, 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 so they park up and down, at least Matilda Street, as far as you can see, to get to the baseball game. And so you haven't solved the safety problem, north-south movement. So my recommendation is, why didn't no one think about roundabouts? You want traffic calming, why aren't there roundabouts? And things to make you really, because people hate roundabouts. Yay, because that slows the traffic down. Why no curb bumps? And the idea is to get the public, you know, the people that are going to the baseball game to get across, and use the road you already have, and make the road better painted, striped. And the last one is, you know, again, no north-south connection, just did not improve anything, is, what are you going to do with the snow? This is all great for summer stuff, where does the snow go? You're pushing it so tight against the north side, where are they going to plow the snow? They got to get it off the main line, got to get those bike paths open. Where does the batuminous path snow go? Because there's no stormwater pond that I'm aware of, because you actually have really good designers in Ramsey County, so I love those people over there, know them very well. So anyway, I'm just asking why the design is only partially thought about, and it's not complete streets, it's not context-sensitive. And for me, the idea that I like, which you've already heard, is the idea that you'd have trees in the center, trees on the edge, and all those things are traffic calming and give you a better sense to be, and just a wider road with black batuminous is not it, is not a livable community.
Thank you. And I, I have to add, the other instruction is, we don't applaud or boo or cheer anybody who speaks, because this is a public forum, not a, a show. Hello and welcome.
Hi, Chris Xander, I live on Matilda Street as well. Just going to largely echo what you've heard. We don't walk down to the crosswalks, and one of the concerns that I've got with the, the center of the, the mid-street crossings is it implies that the intersections aren't crossable. I get the, the state law says you can cross at that intersection. Now you have doubled the number of potential stops, and people see a crosswalk and then don't see a crosswalk at our street, and perceive that, well, you should be walking down to this other street to cross because that's a crosswalk. Yours is not a crosswalk. And so by placing these in the middle, there will be an implied perception, wrong as it is, that's the only place you should be crossing. So all of the statements about you can cross at both, there will be an implied statement that you should be walking down this street, which won't be happening, as you've heard from multiple people, that will be crossing the street there. You also heard the comment about the power poles and utilities? I haven't seen where they're going in the drawings. And so I'm concerned that there is the, the space to put a path there by taking that right-of-way, but now you also have to relocate all of those poles. Has there been a consideration of using the space to the south to leave the paths in there where they are, or if there's a decision that they have to have that path, rather than trying to place it on the north where there's all of the power poles, use that space to the south where it is, you know, parkland and things like that? If it has to happen, can we move it to the south or eliminate it entirely? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Hello, my name's Thomas Vandermaus, 2653 Matilda Street. I've been a resident of Roseville now for about three and a half years, and very happy so far. I can say that I cross into Acorn Park on a daily basis. I walk my dog. I go up to the intersection, and basically, yes, there's sometimes traffic. I'm usually doing it in the morning during the rush hour where there's lots of cars going on. I just, you wait. It's, it's as simple as waiting for a break in the, in the road. I feel it's, it doesn't take too long with the stoplight at Rice, with the stop sign at Western, it always allows for a gap, and I feel that I'm safely able to cross the road. I don't feel that a sidewalk on that north side of, of Roseville, I understand the connecting of the, of trying to connect the streets on the north side, but there's not sidewalks anywhere in our neighborhood, so I don't see that sidewalk on the north side as being overly advantageous. Nor do I see a high volume of pedestrians using the sidewalk, to the point where I feel additional space would be required or beneficial to, to help facilitate people moving. Think the bike lanes are a great idea, I'm fine with the three lanes, I, I think all of that, I just, I just don't see the full benefit of spending money to put in a walkway on that north side and those mid-crossings. I thought Chris just brought up a really good point that I hadn't thought of, which is that, that perceived, I think people will think that, hey, if you're not using those middle ones, you shouldn't be crossing in the middle. I don't think everyone knows the laws, so, I just, thank you for having listened.
All right, thank you. Hello and welcome.
Hi, my name's Judy Bartlet. I live at 2716 Virginia Avenue, and we've been hearing a lot of people tonight that are not in favor of this project, and so that moved me to say I'm very much in favor of this project. I live on Virginia. We can cross, we can cross County C into Acorn from Virginia. I don't often feel very comfortable doing it. There's a slight rise coming up from Western that the traffic, I'm not always visible as a pedestrian. I'm also not the fastest walker, and definitely when my wife was recovering from hip replacement surgery, we did not in any way feel comfortable crossing County C. We absolutely would use that mid, mid-block crossing between Virginia and Farrington, and I just wanted to let you know that somebody in this neighborhood absolutely is in favor of this, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Linda Strawn, and...
My name is Linda Strawn, and I live at 1988 Wheeler Street, so over on this side of Roseville. But I've been a Roseville resident for 25 years. And I've watched my grandchildren move through the Roseville School District. It's been great. But what's missing in many parts of Roseville is a place for kids to walk. And a sidewalk on one side is great, but if you're going to put in something like this, I applaud you, because how far away is Acorn Park from Roseville Middle School? When my grandson was in Roseville Middle School, he walked home with his friends, and that is one road they took. It's a half a mile from B2 to C, and they would walk down C. And let me tell you, if there's, and then they would cross and go north. If you want families with young kids to be safe, this is the kind of thing that you put in. Because, yep, people don't like change. It's good enough. We can leave it the way it is. But really, I feel this is a good vision for Roseville, and I'm very much for it. Now, the other thing is, you want people to be safe. I drive to work every day down McKnight. I get off 36 and I go south on McKnight. And there are those three lanes. It's been there about two years, maybe three years now. It is so much better as a driver to take that artery with one lane here, one lane here, and a turn lane in the middle. It's quicker, it's safer, you can, it's smoother to go to work. There's not all kinds of jockeying there. It's a good, it's a, it's a good, safe thing to put in a neighborhood. So thank you for doing it. I think it's great.
Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Hi, my name is Rose Keveretsky. I live at 2645 Galtier Street. I was the one who sent the email earlier today. I wasn't sure if I'd be able to come tonight. So I won't reiterate all of what I said, but I do have a couple additional points that have come up as other people have spoken. One is, I'm in agreement with multiple people that increased, or we would have some decreased safety for crossing at the intersections with these mid-block crossings. So my front window overlooks the crosswalk into Acorn Park from Galtier Street right over to Acorn. And we've lived there for about three years, so I've seen thousands of people cross this street every day. And I really think that improvements to signage, possibly a lighting system or something, would be better for pedestrian safety than the mid-block crosswalks. We get a lot of parking on our street for overflow from the park, but it's mostly disc golfers, as you can, you know, tell they're carrying their disc over. And I don't see, you know, people drive from all over the cities to play disc golf at Acorn Park. And especially if you're not familiar with the area or you're going there to play disc golf, you're not going to walk an extra block, you know, going halfway down the block, crossing all the way back just to get to the first tee. So I think it would harm pedestrian safety overall to move to these mid-block crosswalks. Also, I'm one of the properties that the pathway would go through the easement or the, you know, down the side of my property. I do not believe that it is actually 20 feet. I went and measured this summer before we got all the snow, and the 13 feet. So my property has a hedge that is a sound and privacy barrier for us. It goes about a foot into my hedge, which, you know, then leads to questions. Are we going to have to remove this? I have small children, that that hedge serves as an extra level of protection for them. It blocks their bedroom window, our bathroom window. So safety concerns there, but also I do not believe that it really is a 20-foot easement. So I am very much in support of the petition to get rid of the mid-block crossings and the pathway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Additional comments? Hello and welcome.
Yes, Mr. Mayor? Jason Sari, 2721 Farrington Street, Roseville, Minnesota. Seems to me this project might look good on paper, but at the end of the day, you're spending a million dollars to upset the people of the neighborhood. I see no functional gain. You're going to hamper your emergency services, postal delivery, your utilities, all for what? What do you really gain? You know, I see Julie Strahan was looking at, or concerned with people of different disabilities. I see people crossing in wheelchairs on a regular basis at Farrington Street to go into the park. They don't seem to have any issues. Usually they're escorted by someone helping them in an electric wheelchair or manual wheelchair. They use the bike paths every day. I fail to see what this project gains. All it does is annoy your voters and it costs money. I strongly urge you to reconsider this. You have an existing sidewalk on the south side. If you don't feel it's wide enough, you should consider widening the sidewalk. It would cost a minimal amount to do that. The other thing for the other residents who don't feel comfortable crossing the street at other locations, all you have to do is spend some money on paint and possibly a light. In the days when we're trying to make our budgets on a personal level, we should consider what people are spending on a public level too. Because this project is not free. You're going to be coming up with at least half the cost of the project. That has to come from Roseville residents. That's coming out of people's grocery bill. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dick Rowland, 2737 Farrington Street. And I don't have a, I don't live on County Road C, but I have empathy for the property owners that live there. They're concerned about their property rights and right-of-way easements. And I'm a bicyclist. I like the idea of the six-foot bike lanes, but my concern is what happens to traffic at Rice Street. Right now it gets backed up during rush hour. has any thought been put into that?
We'll add that to the list of questions.
What's that?
We'll add that to the list of questions.
Yeah, so, yeah, so my concern is about the traffic backup on Rice Street. And it, like I say, it backs up already now with four lanes. My assumption is there'll be some signal timing changes in that signal up at Rice. The other thing, what does Walgreens think about this? They already got cars cutting through their lot. I think it's only going to get worse. And I have one other question. I can't think of it now, but but again, I agree with the property owners that are going to be directly affected by this. That bike lane, that eight-foot bike path, I don't think is needed. When I, when I ride, when I go down to the park, I cross the street, ride the sidewalk, get off County Road C, then I take Western if I'm going south. I don't think that eight-foot bike path is necessary, and it's not going to get that much use. And those are my comments.
Right. You've still got a little bit of time if you want to think of your other point, your question.
Well, I'll just send you an email.
All right. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other public comment on this matter this evening? All right, we'll close the opportunity for public comment, and I want to thank, once again, everybody for participating. And I mean, everybody. I appreciate all the input. Time enforcement becomes a point of conflict, but it's not meant to be an effort, once again, to close down the conversation. And I think an example of that is a lot of good points were made by all of the speakers this evening. I did want to get to some of the questions that were asked. Actually, one thing came up that I don't think was directly asked, but I just wanted to clarify. On the south side of C, across from all of the north-south cross streets, will they be making sure that there are accessible pad ramps at all of, you know, on both the east and west side to get up onto the sidewalk on the south side of C? Is that part of the whole ADA process? I didn't necessarily specifically see a lot of details on the plan as to, you know, lots of little squares for pad ramps in those areas, but I just wanted to double-check if, and if we don't know the answer this evening, if you can follow up, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, they don't have that level right now, so we'll verify.
Okay. Because I think that gets to some of the questions and comments that people had about the crossing at the, at the street crossings. With that, then, let's see. So there's a question about where the, where the snow goes, and I think there was two pieces to that. One might be the stormwater aspects of it. The other piece of it maybe is just the, sort of the storage of snow when there's plowing going on. I'm imagining that the approximately five-foot boulevard between the curb and the proposed pathway would be approximately where most of the snow would go from the roadway, and then the, whatever the distance is from the pathway towards the property lines, that would be where the snow on both sides may go for snow removal on the, on the pathway.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be similar to Lexington Avenue where we have pathways on both sides. You're, the boulevard between the pathway and the curb will hold the road from the roadway, and then certainly some of that usually gets deposited on the pathway, but then there is additional space behind the pathway for it. So certainly, the more room, it would be better. It does restrict it a little bit, but it's nothing that we don't already have and probably 50% of our pathways already are, we share that, we share that space.
Right. And the other, to the stormwater part of it, I'm imagining that as a 2025 project, all aspects of this project have to meet stormwater management practices and regulations of 2025, including if we're adding impervious surface on the north side, that has to be accommodated in terms of runoff and things like that.
Correct. The watershed will require a permit for this, especially if we do increase impervious. The project designer, as part of final design, would determine what we would do for that treatment and/or storage. So that's one thing that has not been identified, but that would be identified, you know, once, once the project, the preliminary layout gets approved.
And that would be part of the project.
And that would be part of the project, yeah. So it'd most likely be some sort of ponding. I know they've looked at doing stuff potentially at, near the railroad for some additional storage, or potentially doing something underground. But the exact location has not been determined at this time.
And then from the area of the pathway, the stormwater would be channeled to that point where the pond is?
Yeah, the watershed's preliminary comments have been, as long as the, they looked at the whole corridor, and all the water goes to the same spot location. So even though there might be a little bit of an increase in one small location, ultimately it all ends up at the lake. They just want to get it reduced at that point. So the net from the areas is down. So that would have to be a goal of the project to meet that requirement.
All right. There was a question about the power poles in that corridor and how that relates. And I know because we've got a boulevard on either side of the pathway, we may have a chance to not disrupt as many power poles, but I don't have a specific memory of exactly where they all are. So, but I, that would be a consideration as part of the project.
Yeah, certainly that's something that will have to be done in final design if the pathway gets chosen. When we did Rice Street a few years ago, we worked around majority of the poles, but then we did end up working with Excel to relocate them, so they're there by permit. So if a pole needs to be relocated, that'd be something that would be coordinated with them to put it in a more appropriate spot. Certainly, trying to design around it is the preferred option because it's less impactful to everyone. But, you know, if it needs to be relocated, we've, we've done that on numerous projects with, both us, both us as a city-led project and the county. So that'd be something that would be determined in final design.
All right. And then I don't think this is a question necessarily for staff to answer, but two things. One is certainly, as was mentioned during the presentation, the city's funding source for the city's portion of the pathway project, if that is taken on forward, would be MSA or municipal state aid funds, which I believe is gas tax money from the state.
Correct, correct.
That goes to the cities. So it wouldn't necessarily be property taxpayers in Roseville other than to the extent you pay gas tax as you're traveling in the state, and a portion of that would be allocated to the city based on the city's mileage of what we call state aid roads in the city. And then a portion of those funds would ultimately probably be used to pay for the city's portion of this project. So that answers that question, unless I'm wrong about that.
Correct. That is the current proposed funding source.
All right. And then, and I think it was mentioned during the presentation about that both the signal at Lexington and the signal at Rice Street would be potentially replaced, I imagine, because it's a lane conversion. You have to have different positioning of lights and things like that. And that would be where the light signal timing and some of those issues would be addressed to make sure that things flow as well as possible. And I've certainly been in the backup at Rice Street before, especially during rush hour too. And, you know, a big portion of what seems to be an issue at that intersection right now is that eastbound and westbound County Road C are separately timed. So I don't know what they're looking at planning to do, but obviously traffic engineers hopefully have some good ideas for solutions for those issues.
Yeah, I'll just add that the Rice Street one will operate more of a traditional signal. Currently, currently it's operated on split phasing, so only eastbound gets direction first, then westbound. The new signal will be designed to flash in yellow, and you'll be able to have both east and west go at the same time with protected phase for the left turners or flashing yellow arrows. So it, the new signal will actually operate a lot more efficiency than what the current one can do, and that's just a function of the design. The intersection of County Road B and Dale, that'd be a great example if the signals were up. They're, they're up, but they're not on yet really quick. But that would be a good example of what it'll look like in the future. So although that striping will still be on for the, sometime next spring, that'll be a great example of how that will be improved.
Okay. I think those were the questions that I noted from the members of the public, unless, counsel, did you note any others?
No, those are the ones I noted.
Okay. Then I think we can proceed to counsel deliberation on this, unless there's other counsel questions for staff? Any follow-up questions from the counsel for staff on what we've got before us here? Counselor Ms. Strawn?
I was just wondering if there was any advantage or possibility of, you mentioned that the Batuminus Trail to the north was actually the most cost-effective way to do things, given the size probably for plowing and everything else like that, rather than having another sidewalk on the north side? Is there, is that the main advantage? Is this just the cost of plowing and maintaining?
It's, it's more multimodal friendly, you know, some people, although we don't specifically say you can't ride your bike on a sidewalk. It's more user-friendly for riding a bike. It's a little wider, so you can have more people walking on it. From a maintenance end, it's, it's easier to maintain. It melts quicker in the winter. We can plow it with multiple things of equipment. It doesn't need to just be a sidewalk machine. We can use a, if we have a heavy snowstorm, we can plow it with a pickup truck. So there's just a lot of advantages. But I would say the main one is, it's the more multimodal purpose of the, of a, of a trail or pathway versus the sidewalk.
And then we talked, what is the space between the roadway and the proposed path? And is there any possibility of reducing the?
So it is proposed to be five feet. That's something that is, so that's typically what we shoot for. It provides at least enough green space to get grass to grow, room for signage, snow storage. It certainly can be reduced. Sometimes if it's just a little pinch point, it could be reduced. But the narrower you go, the more you're going to have snow issues. And then it's more, it's really more snow that we will plow, because we plow the pathways, that we will push over behind the pathway. So from a public works perspective, we prefer the boulevard. Some of that in final design may be worked out if you specifically want to keep utilities. Sometimes the utilities need to be located there too. That's where you might have the power pole. That's, when we did Rice Street, that's where a lot of the power poles either relocated or we, we worked around them. So it can go less than that. We've certainly done that. We've put it directly behind the curb if need be, but it's preferred to have at least a five-foot boulevard.
And then just my last question is, the residents point that it's not possible that the right-of-way is 20 feet because there's a hedge in that space. I would assume that it's quite possible that someone planted a hedge in the city right-of-way?
Yeah, it's, so county right-of-way, but yeah, there certainly could be encroachments. And I do know there is at least one property that is, for whatever reason, wasn't platted, or it's outside the platte that is a narrower right-of-way, so it isn't all 20 feet. But I believe the current design has shown working around that without at least requiring permanent right-of-way. But that's something that would be determined in the final. But it's, like I said, it's a wider corridor. We've, we, the city and the county have built pathways in some narrower corridors. But if right-of-way needs to be acquired, that would certainly be done as part of final design if need be.
Counsel, I'm going to throw a thought out for, to see what response from the counsel might be. I tend to be sympathetic to the petition in both regards. Personally, I think that it seems like a lot of the sidewalk is to be able to get to the mid-block crossings. And, you know, when I look at how that figures into the, or excuse me, the pathway on the north side, when I look at how that figures into the pathway master plan, you know, it was noted that this is 31 out of 79 in terms of segments. It's about 12 points as opposed to like 22 or 23 points for the most highly rated, and maybe 17 or 18 for the four A, B, C, and D. So, you know, so those, those all kind of factor into it. I think it makes some sense to try to maybe look at a sheltered crossing. But as opposed to mid-block, I might suggest, like I had talked as opposed to mid-block, I might suggest, like I had talked about before, just on the east side of Matilda intersection, to provide, you know, that's sort of somewhat halfway between the east end of the residential neighborhood at Woodbridge and Western, so that might be a nice traffic calming still to have something a little more permanent than the things that keep ending up in people's yards, but it also lines up with specific current legal crosswalks, so that might be something to think about. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, but I'll certainly open it up to the rest of the council for feedback on that as to, you know, how terrible an idea that is or whatever. Counsel. Councilmember Schroeder.
Actually, I was thinking along the same lines, so I, I could support that because, you know, originally I was thinking the mid, the mid crosswalks didn't seem to be needed, you know, because if you look at how many crosswalks there are with the, with the actual streets and what people are talking about, it, it seemed overkill to me, so I definitely thought that, and the other piece is...
Speaking, speaking.
The other piece is, is that so many of the citizens or residents, if you look at this partition and who's all involved in it, that's, that's a lot of people, and I think it makes sense to hear their concerns with some of this, so I, I definitely could support not having those pieces in there.
All right, other thoughts from councilmembers, Councilmember Graff?
I could, I could go along with that. I think the main thing for me is that this turn lane solution is, is resolved because I think that is an important issue. When people talk about pedestrian safety, I've had this happen many times with these four-lane roads where one car has stopped, a pedestrian starts, and the car on the other side doesn't stop and nearly hits that pedestrian. So I thought that, for me, that was the key thing in this, in this project that is, is really important. Of course, I like to see pathways increased, I think in general it helps with walkability of neighborhoods, it is a goal of the city, but I do understand the residents' concerns, and change is always difficult. It's hard to remember that easement, easement property is not your property. We all think that, you know, even on my lot, when I look at it, I think, oh, I can plant trees here and so on, but I can plant them there, but when the city or the county needs that, that, that really can go away, so just something to keep in mind, but I could go along with the mayor's suggestion.
Okay, Councilmember Strong?
I can also support that recommendation. I do want to, I do appreciate Councilmember Graff's, I do think it's really important for us to go from the four to three, takes that Audubon feel away from the neighborhood where it just, there's just not a lot of recourse, and I have been involved in accidents where I've been the person on the side, somebody's turning or they're waving you through and really you can't see, so I think it's really important. I also want to take exception to the person who indicated that anyone with gray or white hair doesn't ride a bike. I ride my bike everywhere, and I think we have to remember that our city is changing, and their city is peopled with a lot of younger people or people who intentionally want to walk. We're trying to find lots of multimodal ways to get about our city, and so I know as someone who used to push a double stroller, that a regular sidewalk isn't always the most conducive to that, but that larger pathway or that way, I never wanted to take my kids on the bike path when they weren't solid bikers, so, or on the street, but I would take them on the pathway, but if, if I'm riding alone, there's no reason for me to ride up on that pathway, so I think we need to be understanding, and if you go to any other first or second ring suburb, you're going to find all these different kinds of mobility and motility, and so I think it's really important that we look at lots of different ways, and I think it's important that this comes from the county, we aren't sitting around ways, thinking of ways to be disruptive, but that we really are trying to take advantage of this opportunity that they've presented us to make a more conducive neighborhood amenity available to more people.
Right, I think it probably would seem appropriate at this point to make a motion. I don't know, Councilmember Schroeder, if you want to make the motion?
I would take, I would make the motion to support the petition and...
The petition?
Mm-hmm.
I said I would make the motion to support the petition.
Right, and I will second that in the condition that the motion include the protected crossing on the east side of the Matilda intersection, and I'm going to add to it a preference to make sure that we address ADA ramp access issues on the south side of C at all of the street intersections, and perhaps even some striping enhancements for many, if not all, of those crosswalks, at least a recommendation to, to, to look at those, certainly once again, it's the county project. As the maker, do you accept that?
I agree, I accept that.
All right.
Could you reword that? That seemed a little awkward to me, it should be, motion to approve County Road C layout with the change on the path, I think, isn't that what you're talking about?
I believe the motion, well, double check. I believe the motion would be to essentially to accept the petition, which was...
Yeah, petition of the residents.
Of the residents.
Of the residents.
Right, which was to not have the pathway on the north side of County Road C and to not have the mid-block crossings.
Okay.
Yes.
Clarifying that the city still would see benefit to the protected crossing design of a mid-block crossing at that intersection of Matilda on the east side because there isn't that left turn, westbound's left turn south, and also enhancing as much as possible the, the existing crossings at the intersections, whether that be striping and certainly looking at the ADA ramps wherever possible if they're not there now.
And going from four to three.
Well, yeah, that's...
That's still going to happen.
The petition didn't ask for a change to that either.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd like to make a counter motion to accept the north side pathway with the amendments as noted with the crosswalks at the intersection and the striping as indicated, so accepting that portion of the recommendation, but maintaining the north side pathway.
All right, is there...
Motion on the floor.
No, we can, we can, you can move to amend. So is there a second to that motion? It would be essentially a, a motion to amend and/or replace the original motion by continuing to include the pathway on the north side of C. Is there a second for that motion? I rule that motion fails for lack of a second. We have the original motion before us. Councilmember Schroeder is the maker of the motion discussion in support of the motion.
I just wanted to say I appreciate all the comments and the, all the thought going into this project, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, your city council does want to hear from the residents and what they think about these things, and some of these projects, you know, the changes can be hard, but in this case, I just wanted to say we heard what you had to say about it, so thank you for bringing it forward.
As the second, or I'll defer, additional discussion on the motion? Councilmember Strong?
I'd just like to comment that there are many different portions of the city, including County Road B, that complained vociferously about sidewalks going on both sides of the street. It can be challenging when it's not what your wish is, but it was very clear to me when I moved on to my street that at any time sidewalk could be put into my city, and so I think, you know, thinking about what the greater good is for the, the whole city and all the residents, not just me today, but 50 years from now, some people really do want those amenities for access to the neighborhood around them, so.
All right, other discussion on the motion?
No.
Councilmember Bauer?
I would just echo what Councilmember Schroeder said, stated your input, your petition, the effort that went into that, your discussion points today, definitely informed the decisions in this motion today, really appreciate the effort that was put into this.
All right, and after having deferred, I, I would just note, I, I think in the past I have supported sidewalks on, on both sides. One case that comes to mind is on County Road D by M.D. Williams School, and I think the, the presence of the school and the traffic on D in that particular area, while it's not a tremendously high count of traffic, because of the school and because of some of those issues, I was supportive of that, certainly supportive of, of amenities on both sides of Lexington. As I pointed out earlier, Lexington has something upwards of 18,000 trips, especially south of County Road B. A, the, the three, four to three conversion does function well, but B, that's a lot of car traffic, and, you know, we need to provide the ability for people, the pedestrians and others, to move on both sides without having to necessarily cross over, so I, I think that just in this particular area, the traffic count doesn't quite register with me as, as requiring, at least at this point, the, the pathway on the north side. I completely understand the notion of it as an amenity for families with children, and I, and I am supportive of that, you know, as, as, as a concept, I just think in this particular case, the justification isn't enough because the connectivity is pretty limited, just on that, that short segment on the north side, so those, those are my additional thoughts in relation to those issues. Final chance for discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strong?
I just wondered if this alters our pathway master plan either here or elsewhere within the city if we make a change or we make this determination at this time?
I guess I would say, and speaking for myself, that probably not because it's already not like one of the top highest priorities, and the reason that we were considering it was because there was a project at the time, which is, as was noted before, frequently the case when we will move something up on the list because of the, there's an opportunity to take advantage of, of, you know, savings as part of a bigger project or funding that's available, and so I don't know that it changes our pathway master plan at all.
Well, I think it'd be wise for us to think ahead and make a determination on what would qualify something to be part of the master plan based on traffic or otherwise, so that way it is consistently applied again.
Well...
The fairness, just making it, just because you have the loudest group of people shouldn't mean that you're no longer included if another area is also on the pathway master plan, that they would also receive the same consideration for people, maybe it's a, a high rental area, and I want to make sure that they would receive the same consideration if they spoke out against a project.
Yeah, I would just note that I think the city's history in terms of when people speak out against pathway projects is to build the pathways in most of those cases, I think it's been the rare exception that we've not put in a pathway where people have, have spoken against it, actually the County Road D example I said earlier was, was one of those, and so I think, you know, we've got a pretty good history of, of actually building pathways where we believe they're appropriate, and I'm not saying that the pathway master plan is changed at all by this motion. All right, I think we've covered the, the discussion from the council, we have the motion before us, once again, to accept the petition and suggest additional changes to the plan, not having the sidewalk on the north side and not having mid-block crossings, but do, doing enhancements of other crossings in the corridor. With that, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, that motion passes four to one with Councilmember Strong in opposition. Once again, we appreciate everybody's involvement, and hopefully this is one of those civics examples of how, how your government works, and certainly, as we always say, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we also understand that you have important things to do in your life that may not necessarily involve staring at us for another couple hours. So with that, why don't we, since it's also eight o'clock, we'll take a short break. All right, we're back from a short break here. Moving on, as was noted, to our second business item this evening, item 8B, which is to consider approving the 2025 Public Works work plan. And I'll turn it back over to our Public Works staff, and I believe Jennifer Lowery is taking the lead on this one. It's Lowery.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. All right, I'll go through this quickly. You all have the presentation in your packet. I'm happy to stand for any questions now or anytime you have questions. So just let us know. This was presented to our commission, our Public Works Commission in November. And since I have you, a captive audience, I will quickly breeze through accomplishments. We have our numbers of permits done. I'll talk a little bit more about lead-free Roseville. We updated our lighting plan that was 20 years old. We're currently working on our bike plan and also a safety plan that will, we will update the council on more as we have more to share. We offered water efficiency rebates and a private sewer grant that we received again this year. So that's the second year for that. We vacated a lot of right-of-way, updated ordinances, and our biggest project for last year was reconstructing 0.7 miles of County Road B. And we also finished the McCarran's retaining wall. Maintenance was incredibly busy. They replaced 300 or 539 water meters. I think we had less water breaks last year than the prior year, and also significantly less snow. So about eight feet the prior year, about 33 inches last year, which is kind of crazy. Sustainability, maintained green step level five for the third year in a row. And the Green to Go ordinance was approved in October. And Noel was crazy busy with newsletters, engagements, and events. Our turnout for our cleanup day was better. I think we had better weather than the prior year. And I'm always amazed by things like 90 mattresses and one ton of textiles. For the lead-free Roseville, the Minnesota Department of Health requiring us to report on what the water service material is, was an incredible amount of communication with residents. We have just over 10,000 water services, and we have, I think, now a little over 90% reporting. So that's either by them calling and scheduling appointments or doing the self-inspection. So that's pretty amazing. And it only took almost 10,000 letters, 5,000 postcards, and 427 door hangers. I've mentioned the bike plan, and we've kind of talked about it before. We're still working on that. We have our bike committee meeting on Monday to review the latest draft before routing it for more feedback and public comment. And that had a significant amount of engagement and great turnout. And we got to meet like the bike community here and making those connections has been very valuable. We're also working with MINDOT on a pilot to create a municipal safety plan that I just mentioned, and we'll talk more about that once we have a draft to review. And we gave almost $9,000 in water rebates and $40,000 in sewer repairs. And the sewer repairs are to reduce infiltration into the storm sewer. Just a quick slideshow of projects and pictures. There was quite a bit of work. On the bottom is County Road B before and after, which was our large project. Dredging of the pond on the top right and the bottom right, and the ducks returned in case anyone's concerned. We redid a lift station. This is Long Lake Lift Station. And then on the bottom was the McCarran's retaining wall. I don't know if any of you guys went out there during construction, but it was actually pretty cool to see the various stages. And I'm kind of nerdy like that, but I think other people-
It was hard to see because we couldn't drive by it.
Oh, wait, the trail was open!
Oh, yeah.
And then just wanted to give a shout out to all the people that make it happen. We had some great tours with other agencies. We had great interns. We went out with our commission. We had participants being volunteers at events and at our public engagements as well as our various staff. So the people here are really great to work with. All right, so into the meats of the plan. This map with all the little dots and lines show all of our projects that I'll just run through planned for 2025. For 2025, our pavement management plan is just reclaim and mill and overlay reclaim is just digging through all of the pavement, but leaving the curbs in place. And so we're still trying to decipher which from the, from the recent testing we did out there, if some more will be reclaimed. But the blue and red shown here are the streets intended to be done this year. As always, we'll do some kind of curb repair as needed and ADA pad ramps. Our pathways project, so we have the pathways listed as new. We're all intended to be done this past year, but have carried over into 2025. So we will intend on completing the Twin Lakes Trail Phase Two, a segment of Lexington Pathway, the Wagners Western Connection, and also the connection from Western into the Tamarack Park. In addition, Villas Park, a segment of Fairview and County Road B and County Road C west of 36 are some trail segments that are, or pathway segments that are intended to be resurfaced by our forces. In addition, we have the bike plan, like I mentioned, and with the bike plan, we also have funding from MINDOT and working with Ramsey County to do a bike demonstration as a part of the plan. And that would be adding on-road bike lanes on Hamlin between B and B2. So that is intended to be implemented this coming year. And there's no parking lot resurfacing proposed for 2025. Lighting, I don't remember if we had lighting on here last year. I don't know if we did. So we, like I mentioned, we updated the 20-year-old lighting policy. With that, we have a five-year plan now to add about 150 new streetlights that are Excel lights on wood poles or on fiberglass poles if needed at intersections, curves, and crosswalks. That's what you see in the purple dots, kind of in the southwest quadrant of the city. And so the five-year plan will get us to implement those in sections across the city. Also, a five-year plan to replace the existing enhanced street lighting that we have had contracts with Excel for them to own and maintain those. Those are expiring and becoming our property when they're nice and used up. So the five-year plan to address those. And so our segments for 2025 are shown here in red on Center Point Drive and then a short segment on Arthur Street. We have some sanitary work. The Dale and Owasso Lift Station has already been awarded, but we're awaiting materials. So that construction will occur this year. And we'll also get a consultant to start on design of the Cohansi Lift Station upgrade that will may construct, start construction late this year, but likely next year. In addition, we have about $1 million in lining to do. And we're getting a consultant on board, or we have him on board,
On board.
To help with plans for some of this lining because it's our larger mains under larger roads, like county or state roads.
Maines that were, wouldn't want to have a major issue like under 35W or whatnot because it would impede a lot of traffic. So we're trying to get, be very proactive on these.
And they might be ones too that have a higher flow and need bypassing. So a little more complex than just our residential lining that we do year to year. In addition, I mentioned we did get, and this just came before you guys, I think, early December, we got $53,000 for the private INI sewer lateral repairs. So once we get the contract signed by Met Council, we'll get that live and on the internet and be able to advertise that. We also intend to hire a consultant for a lift station analysis. The last one was 10 years ago. We've kind of worked our way through those recommendations of upgrades and improvements to our lift stations, both storm and sanitary. And so we want to do another kind of evaluation of them to come up with a next 10-year plan. And then we'll do our normal upgrades with the PMP. Water main, we have $200,000 of repairs that we will be doing in general maintenance. And we'll also be working on the design of the Hamlin water main, which is upsizing some water main on Hamlin north of Josephine and Narben Hills. In addition, we have some booster station improvements. It's not sure what phase it is of the improvements, but it's one of the phases. So we have roof and noise attenuation and security improvements. And then potentially, if we get some additional funding, we'll put, we intend to put solar on the roof there as well. We'll continue with the AMR, which is auto meter reading and meter replacements for our water services. And we will continue to do our water efficiency rebates. Storm sewer, a lot of the funding will go towards the Twin Lakes Trail Phase Two. We also have some pipelining happening and some repaving of an access to the lift station. And we have 250,000, I believe, going towards the Hamlin-Clarmar drainage improvements that the county is doing. For City Ditch Two, which is the area that has the aerial underneath it, and it's kind of the diagonal cutting through it, they'll, the team will continue project planning. That was the one where we had done all the trimming of the trees 23, I believe. And then, like I mentioned, the consultant for the lift station analysis will be both for storm sewer lift stations and sanitary sewer lift stations. Sustainability, this is one I was hoping for my notes to show up because otherwise I would not do this justice. So Noel's working on developing the Climate Action Plan using the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Funds, which were expected to receive notice on soon. And the council will hear more about that throughout the year, to work on implementing the Energy Action Plan goals, which is outreach to households that are energy burdened by more than 6% on utility bills, discussions about lesmo May, or if it's a different name or effort, and then promote Roseville Sustainability and maintain our green step reporting and B3 energy tracking. And then, in addition to the crazy amount of outreach and education through resource fairs and other events. Environmental is the biggest one going on now is the new city-owned recycling carts. So about 12,000 carts will be rolled out in mid-May to end of June timeline. And the Eureka, we had waste management from, or we had Eureka from 2006 until, I think, is it June of this year? So the waste management contract to begin in June of 2025 is being finalized and will come before council when ready. Also working with Ramsey County about curbside organics and recycling in parks. And then just to touch on the variety of projects happening within Roseville by other agencies that staff is on their project management teams and working through details on, the Chunk Highway 36 multimodal study, that document still isn't finished, but that's the one that had the options about closure of the Hamlin ramps to and from 36, et cetera. That's expected to be completed this year. Selling design from 36 to Gray Fox. So that's a, that's a repaving with a trail addition and some other changes in 2026, and also paving of Chunk Highway 280 in 2026. Ramsey County, I mentioned, Hamlin-Clarmar. Mill and overlay of County Road D is scheduled for this year. And then the rest of these are designed for future ones. So County Road C, like we just discussed, design of Hamlin from C to C2 is actually a county pavement project, but Roseville is proposed to lead it so that we can build the trail and do our water main work in coordination. Victoria from C to Hamlin Harriet in 2027. We mentioned the County Road C Bridge. This is showing 2028, but like Jesse mentioned, depending on the funding, it might ebb and flow to be aligned or not aligned more. And then the Rice reconstruction. In addition, the Metro, Metro Micro Roseville area plan is, is that live now?
I think it actually went live today.
Okay.
It was the kickoff.
They just reposted their, their social media post about it.
About today? Okay.
Yep.
And then they have their larger Network Now plan that's supposed to be finalized this year, as well as the continuation of G-line planning. And the watersheds still have the same work going on as previously planned. Sorry, that took longer than I intended, but I talk fast. So are there any questions?
Questions from the council. Councilmember Schroeder.
Wow, that's quite the list.
That's not a question.
Actually, you know, that, I'm impressed if you can get all this done in 2025. So this is a small detail I just wanted to talk about was the lesmo May. I believe there's some conversation about this, and I think Councilmember Strawn also had some information on this as well, that that doesn't seem to be the science behind it, doesn't seem to support it. So I guess I would say if we could almost turn that to more of pollinator protection versus just lesmo, I think that would, I would have, that would be my preference. But everything else is like, wow.
And I think that's what Noel had talked about with our commission.
Yeah, so the Public Works Commission did discuss this in November. So we will most like, typically, we've been bringing you guys a resolution in like February, early February. So it'll probably be a little different this year. So that's, we'll probably have Noel here, like I said, most likely early February, so we can reeducate her or explain it a little differently.
Does that mean that, that our lawn signs become collector's items?
Maybe there's a sticker.
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Strawn.
I just wanted to echo on that. As I think I mentioned before, my daughter is a horticulture educator for Cornell Extension, and she did a white paper about this. But a lot of her sources, who she goes, looks to is the University of Minnesota B-Lab. And really, she refers everybody along the East Coast to the B-Lab as well, just so that it's good science that replicates what's happening here in the Midwest. The original nomo was a 9A zone. It's just not necessarily what happens in May here in Minnesota when they're frost-free in that area in early March. And so I think it's good, just there's a lot of thing. One of the acronyms they said, or one of the things they said was Mohai, May, June, and July, which I think a lot of people do anyway. So there's a lot to it. But I would echo Councilmember Schroeder's, just to make sure that it's a great idea. But I think a lot of people just jump on it and don't realize that the science doesn't necessarily bore out, you know, bear out what's been talked about.
Councilmember Graff.
A question on the, the streetlights that are being added. What is the style of those? Are they sort of down, downward light things, or are they?
So they're all pretty much exactly what we have today. They're all down lighting, no up lighting. They're all flat cobra heads with cutoff lighting on the back if need be. So basically, what's on all the, well, majority of the city roads currently.
Yeah.
The only lighting that'll be different on that map is the Center Point one. I believe we did more of like a box style, but same thing, it's all down lighting.
Good. Thanks. Yeah, big, big projects. It's impressive. The only thing I wanted to say too is the, the pond is much appreciated over in my neighborhood. And yes, the ducks returned in force.
He did.
I mean, it was like, wow. I think the day it was done. The, the other thing is I know that the mayor touched on this last, maybe our last meeting, just about a general update on what is the status of the ponds, the holding ponds throughout Roseville, because so many of them have been neglected. And we've talked about it over the last three to four years. And if they aren't really functioning as they're supposed to be, they aren't doing us any good. So I know it's an expensive project, but I would like to have that followed up on at some point, just so we have an analysis of where we are and where we're headed down the road for the cause.
Yeah, we, we can certainly give you guys an update. I know Ryan would love to talk story about our ponds with you guys.
Okay.
Well, I think that ties in with our capital funding needs too, which is what I mentioned it in regard to, because, you know, clearly we want to make sure we're setting aside the funds for the projects as we need to.
Yeah, just a real quick tease in that we've done a very, we've, we've done a lot of testing over the last five years. We already kind of know which ponds we are. So they're kind of queued up. So we just got to prioritize which ones we want to go after first.
Got it.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Bauer?
I'll just echo it, Councilmember Graff. While door knocking, I heard that everywhere, everyone that was on a pond noted. While door knocking, I heard that everywhere, everyone that was on a pond noted dredging or something related to that. So I know that will be well received by the public.
All right. The official requested action is to approve the 2025 Works Plan, Public Works Plan. And of course, this doesn't probably need to be said, but we say it every year, this doesn't mean we're necessarily approving all of the projects and the contractors for all the projects. This is just saying thumbs up to the plan. So is there a motion on the plan?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff, to approve the 2025 Public Works Work Plan as presented, although, oh, discussion on the motion? I didn't want to preclude discussion. I think we had a pretty good one tonight.
I just think they, they've done a great job. You guys, you do a good job in your department. I really appreciate it, and it helps me with relating the information to the public.
All right. There's no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item, also a Public Works item, and I see they've already switched seats over there, very adept. This is to consider sort of a final approval on the 2025, oh, excuse me, on the wayfinding signage locations. I almost was going to put you in charge of our legislative priorities. Very interesting. This is the wayfinding signage item, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Fryham.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go through this really quick since you've seen most of this, so kind of discussed where, how this came about, but we have funding set aside from ARPA funds back in 2024. We did approve at the end of last year a two quotes for the 24 signs, so that wasn't increased, so that's kind of what we're bringing back is what were those revised locations would be. So on this map, this is kind of the, the crux of the discussion tonight. Basically, the areas in green are the ones that we added the signs to for those additional signs, so all the existing ones stayed, I believe. And then we, like you said, we added the 10 additional green ones. The majority of those were on County Road B2 to connect that corridor. And then we did add a few additional on, I guess, Hamlin and then a little bit on Rice and Sea. The second attachment is kind of what would go on those signs. I will say there'll, there'll be a little more truthing on this one, just to make sure we got 100% consistency, but that was just to give a little bit of the flavor of what would be added on those signs. And then I did just want to say, we did work with our communication staff. I know we took your guys' feedback on what the sign would look like, and that's kind of the, the updated logo that we would attach to the top of that. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions the council have or go into more detailed depth, but I'll turn it over to you guys. And I guess we would just look for a motion to approve the way signing location plan and we, but look to install that sometime in May as soon as the frost gets out.
Right. Questions from the council? Councilmember Schroeder.
I'm just curious, I mean, what will the maintenance be on these going forward?
So working with the county, these are all going to generally be located behind a pathway. So they're going to be pretty well out of a plow lane or, we're in about vehicles or plows hitting them. We'd be plowing them with like our sidewalk machines, so they should be pretty well protected. They're going to, the, the pole itself will be similar to a light pole, so we should be able to get 30, 35 years out of it. The blades at the top, they're interchangeable, so we can, if we rename a park or add a park, we can add those. Those blades are actually pretty cheap. So the, the main cost involved with this was really the installation of the foundation and the pole itself, but they should last, like I said, about 30 years.
Councilmember Strawn.
I'd just like to echo one of the residents' concerns about Harmar. Rosedale, I think, seems significant, and it would take a pretty big change for that to change in the next 10 years to go away completely. Although it doesn't really indicate, if you don't know what Rosedale Center is, what it is, retail or shops, but Harmar is more empty than it is full at the moment, and so I do wonder if we should just also maintain the retail restaurants type of idea rather than, than trying to keep that. Or if, you know, we direct people to the A-line or other transit that we're trying to get people to move on. So those would be the two main things that I note in the ideas. I do know that some schools are mentioned and some are not. Some parks are mentioned and some are not. Obviously, a lot of other folks probably, but what about my park? So, but, and then I don't know if we would need to, I guess it doesn't go as far as over to where the middle school would be if, that's just always, no one ever seems to know how to get to the middle school. And it's not in Roseville, but it's enough tangential that people are always like confused.
If I, if I could, thank you for those suggestions. I think we have those discussions on what can and can't, should be on there. One is we want to make sure it's walkable distance because it's really focused more on the pedestrian level versus the vehicles. So I would think the middle school might just be a little bit too far to really, because there's no signage on the other side of Rice Street. So people would get there, I mean, they might see it in the distance, they might not. Blades, as Jesse mentioned, are interchangeable, so certainly we can adapt to things as they change, and we might find some wording and signage better over, over time that we may want to do it. Certainly, the Harmar reference was beyond just the Harmar, the whole shopping area over there. So, you know, retail slash restaurants might be a generic way to say it that way. We did feel it was important to call it Rosedale because a lot of people know Rosedale, and it's an important place. So we figured, well, Harmar, even though it's, it's not the same level as, as Rosedale, it's still, you know, a central shopping area, and there's still some viable businesses there as well.
Well, it certainly is a historical landmark name in the community. That's why I was thinking it probably makes sense to keep it until it's no longer the case. Other thoughts from other councilmembers or questions? Councilmember Graff.
I know our visit to Roseville will be pleased to see this because they've been talking about wayfaring and signage for quite some time, so I think it's a good start. I, I'm very interested to see how it'll play out. And I think one of the things, one of my, one of the residents said is sometimes you don't realize how close that thing is to you until you see it on a little sign. You're like, oh, that's only a third of a mile to there. I could walk there instead of drive my car. So I think that's a plus too.
We need to worry about the folks in your neighborhood who aren't really included in this.
Well, they're used to that. We're down in the corner of there, so.
Well, just also north of Sea, there's not much representation.
I know, but.
Well, it doesn't mean we can't add signs down the road.
But we do have a better attachment, so that one's.
I think, I think that's, that this is a good starting point, and we can certainly add as we find the need to do that. Can you refresh me as to like what the pole cost is itself if we had to replace a pole for some reason? Just a rough idea, is it 100 million?
No, the average cost of the pole and, and the sign blades that would go on it was like $8,200.
Okay.
So, and like I said, the, the cost of a blade, I think, is $75. So every time we want to swap one out, it's not a.
Is that the kind of thing where it makes sense to have a pole on hand as a spare part, or is it something where we just budget?
We will probably not, that typically.
To replace because it gets damaged?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll look to just replace as needed. Every time we try to keep them on hand, they, there's sometimes more harm than good on that, so.
I can imagine they might get shifted around a lot and stuff set on them.
Or just, you don't know where you put it.
You buy the extra thing and then you can't.
Especially since they're not really a safety, a true safety thing. If you're out short a pole, I don't think the lead time on these are going to be too long.
Yeah, I was mostly thinking in terms of whether we want to make this a CIP item or if it's just kind of a maintenance budget item, and that's fine. Okay. So we have the requested action is a motion to approve the wayfinding signage pack, plan.
Second.
It was moved before I could even get the whole motion out.
Trying to get back on.
Moved, Councilmember Strawn, the second approving the wayfinding signage plan as presented. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. And I just note to the public, I think we have one member of the public here right now, so I didn't open it up for public comment, but certainly if somebody did want to comment, we could do that, all right? With that, we have the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That plan is approved. Next, are experts on the legislative priority? No. This item, Legislative Priorities for 2025 is back before us, and City Manager Trudgeon will be introducing this item for us, for I think our semi-final consideration.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. In your packet is kind of a listing of our legislative priorities. I would note that there were some changes based on the December 2nd council conversation. Previously, in a, as a high priority item, we did have a proposal to allow taproom and a cocktail room on the same premise, really driven by business here in our community that was looking for legislation and support. I did check with Ben Prustillery, who was the proposer of that, and that is not an active proposal anymore, and it's fine to have it removed as a high priority item. Would also mention that last year we had a priority under other priorities about having the cities being able to designate which licensed ambulance service provider may provide services into their community, and also determine the appropriate level of service and response. And the council did want that moved from the other priorities to a high priority item. And I should mention, the high priority items are items that we would more actively engage the legislature in advocating, whether it's letter writing, testifying, ensuring that with our legislative delegation. The other priorities are things that we support, on record supporting, but we will not be taking an active lead on. So then we also did some other configuration. We, last year, as a high priority, we had creation of a sustainable alternative funding sources for cable commissions. I think there was a very specific bill going through. The council directed staff to move that down to another priority. Not sure exactly how that's going to come out in this part of the legislative session, but there will be probably a bill, but so anyway, that's something we'll take up more of a backseat on. The council also wanted me to check on the funding for the mental health voluntary engagement. That was a very specific proposal. Ramsey County was trying to get passed last year, did not get passed, and did check with the staff at Ramsey County, and they do not have a specific proposal going forward at this year. So we can remove that. There's also some question about the racial equity data that we've had, I don't know, five, four, or five years, that actually wasn't very specific and vague. And as, as staff looked at it again, we're not sure exactly what a legislative ask would be around that. Beyond more information is better. We want to have those tools available to us as we make decisions. We've been able to get better access to data over time, whether through us, in the public entities and/or private firms. So my suggestion to the council would be just to have that removed completely. And if there's anything specific down the road that we think would be appropriate, we would bring that forward. And then finally, we did want to make sure that, and this is something the council had a presentation earlier in, well, late fall 2024, about legislation, about Ramsey County Economic Development Authority powers, and the council did agree to be on record to support that, but as other priority. So up on the screen is what the new configured 2025 legislative priorities are, and I didn't go over the ones that have been in there in the past, but so for our high priorities, we would continue to seek financial support for the capital improvements for the John rules Minnesota Oval. We'll look to, for legislation to enact statewide licensing of massage therapists, modify the existing state law regarding park dedication to allow for the collection of park dedication, new development without the requirement that the land be subdivided. This is something we did add last year. And I think there was some legislation proposed, but didn't really get anywhere, but we would want to be in record to support that. And then the, about the ambulance service provider, as I mentioned. And then the, all the other priorities are kind of a lengthy list, but all things that were on record supporting and we'll certainly monitor as the session goes forward to see if there's any traction on any of these things, and we'll certainly keep the council informed. As is always, there's always proposals throughout the session that might pop up. We'll bring forward as needed for council when, I think we talked a lot about the whole, getting the term.
Zoning preemptions.
Zoning preemptions and all that type of housing stuff there. That was such a conglomeration of different things that we felt, I think, at the last meeting, it was best just to be more reactive and see what it kind of comes out and brings something forward. So very likely we'll be bringing something forward on that. Really, at the state of the legislature right now, I'm not sure how they're going to function, to be quite honest. As, as I read every day, there's something different there. One of the things that is probably most impactful for us is if we get the additional Oval bonding funding. As I mentioned last time, bonding funding is an even year. We're going to be an odd year if they didn't have one last year. Does that mean they're going to do one this year? Who really knows? So stay tuned on that. But I think this is a good listing of things that are important, important to us, and we'll continue to monitor that. I will certainly communicate once this is passed to our legislative delegation. I may have to wait for one later in the month, but I will reach out to them and meet with them and what have you. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think this is pretty thorough, and I think it addresses your concerns and feedback from last time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there questions from the council on the proposed 2025 legislative priorities as presented? Is there anyone from the, the public that wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right. With that then, the requested action is a motion to approve the proposed 2025 legislative priorities.
So moved.
Removed by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Bauer. First, second of the, of the career, first of many. Now I have to remember what the initials are. Okay. I was going to write JE. With that, we have the motion and the second before us. Discussion on the motion as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff?
No, I think it's a good start, and I'm glad we, we narrowed it down so it's focused. So if something does come up, at least we can act on that, and I think it's a good start.
All right, as the second, Councilmember Bauer.
I'll second one. Councilmember Graff says, I do think being able to react to things that come up will be important.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Our legislative priorities for 2025 are approved. That brings us to one of our first sort of routine items for the first of the year meeting, the consideration of commission reappointments and vacancies for 2025. And our Assistant City Manager Rebecca Olson will introduce this item for us this evening, I'm presuming, because you're at the table. Welcome, Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. As Mayor mentioned, this is a fairly routine item. Every year, the council is asked to appoint vac, or I'm sorry, declare vacancies for different commissions throughout the city. This year is a little bit different, simply because you have additional vacancies on that Equity and Inclusion Commission that weren't filled as well. So I will just briefly go through what the vacancies are so that you understand what's in the packet, so you know what's there and what isn't. And then you're going to be asked to make a decision on three different items that I'll highlight at the end there. So first, under our Finance Commission, we have two vacancies. One from a commissioner who is not eligible for another term, and one who is eligible and is interested. The commissioners who are interested and eligible for being reappointed have applications in your packet and a handout in front of you as well. So technically, there are two vacancies. Council will be making a decision on the process for the reappointments at the end of this presentation here, so you can choose to declare or appoint up to two vacancies for that one. Equity Inclusion, there are currently four seating, four commissioners already on the commission. That leaves three additional vacancies that have not been filled. The Parks and Rec Commission has four vacancies. Three of them are from commissioners who are no longer eligible for another term, and one who is eligible and is interested in being reappointed. The Planning Commission has three vacancies. Two of them are from two commissioners who are no longer eligible for another term, and one from our newest council member who had to resign due to being elected to the city council. Our Police Civil Service has one vacancy due to a commissioner not being eligible for an additional term. And finally, the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission has two vacancies. Both commissioners are interested in being reappointed and are eligible. So in the, the request for council action, at the very end of it, you will see a table that has the number of vacancies for each commission. Those do include vacancies for commissioners who are interested in being reappointed. So under Finance, it'll say two. If you choose to reappoint the commissioner who is interested, then there would only be one, one vacancy. So tonight, the three actions that staff is asking you to consider are, one, you have the option of interviewing commissioners who are seeking reappointment, so deciding whether you would like to re-interview them, or if you'd like to appoint them, reappoint them now or at a future date. The second one, action that you're being asked to consider is to declare any additional vacancies. And finally, to just consider the, the timeline that is in your packet and approve that and finalize those dates. That includes the interview dates. As we normally do, we set aside two dates for the first round here in the spring for people who are interested in applying. Sometimes we need that second date, sometimes we don't. So with that, I will pause. That was a lot of information thrown at you, but if you have any questions, I'm available here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Olson. Questions for staff on the commissioner reappointment process? Any of the aspects of what we're being asked to consider this evening? The first question then is in regard to those commissioners who are eligible and seeking reappointment. Does the council want to take an action other than to reappoint those commissioners at this time? Councilmember Schroeder.
I would move to appoint those that are reapplying. Second. All of them.
All of them.
All right. So those, all that are eligible and interested in reappointment. All right. Councilmember Schroeder move. Councilmember Strawn, second. Reappointment of those commissioners eligible and applying for reappointment. Discussion on the motion as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Schroeder.
No, I think it's, you know, we want to continue to have people interested in this, and I think we've shown that they, you know, they've come to most of the meetings and they've been doing a good job, and I think we just want to make sure and retain them.
All right. And as the second of the motion, Councilmember Strawn.
I would concur. The, it looks like the engagement level of the folks who are interested has been high. I know that at least one of the members has been the chair, or two, and so I think unlike other times when there've been somewhat spotty performance, I see all of these look like they're actively engaged, and I don't see any reason to seek re-interviewing at this time.
Right. Other discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion to reappoint those eligible and seeking reappointment to the commissions, as noted, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. I don't believe unless council wants to take up two separate motions, we could combine the second and third actions if we have no question about the schedule and want to declare the other vacancies. Councilmember Schroeder.
I do have one question. We are going to record the interviews again, correct, for those of us that may not be available on those dates?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to combine actions two and three to declare vacancies and finalize dates.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to take actions two and three. And of course, to clarify on two, it's, it's the remaining vacancies after the reappointments. With that, discussion on the motion as the maker, Councilmember Strawn.
Just makes sense, and I appreciate the forethought to have them all ready to go.
All right. And Councilmember Groff as the second or?
No, it's, it's getting things done in a timely way. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of making those, or declaring those vacancies and approving the project, the schedule, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. That then brings us to item eight G, and I want to thank staff again for turning around quickly, and probably the applicants as well, turning around quickly, the reapplication applications. With that, that brings us again to item eight G, which is to consider city council liaisons to various groups and committees. Oh, I'm sorry. See, I've got so many marks on my, my agenda here. We do need to do F as far as rules and procedure. Mr. Tregeon, I believe this is your item.
Yeah, so every year at the first meeting, we do have the council review, the council and advisory commission's rules of procedure for the best way to conduct city business. A copy of that is in your packet. You may recall last year, there were some changes, one regarding how commission members could bring up new topics as part of fuller commission conversation, so it really mirrored what the council rules are on that. And also, we added some new language addressing when virtual participation in city meetings was allowed. So for this year, there is only one proposed change, and that's by Mayor Rowe regarding who would be a presiding officer in absence of both the mayor and acting mayor being unable to do that. And I think in a nutshell, that's really boils down to the most senior council member would run the meeting or represent the city on that. I'm not sure if this has been an issue in the past. Most always, we have the mayor here, but when the acting mayor does have to act, it's very rare they have to run a meeting, but certainly they do show up at some other events if the mayor can't make it. So this is kind of three D, I guess. You have the, the mayor, and then the backup mayor, and then the third person.
Backup to the backup.
And someday, the mayor might not be as available as this mayor.
That's right. Well, and, and once again, I don't know that this, this is one, this is one of those rules that's just burning in everybody's mind as, as absolutely necessary to do, but I, I think it makes sense to, to think about it ahead of time and just put it in there so that if the situation arises, you know, you don't have a commission or the council kind of sitting there going, well, what do we do? Because somebody has to call the meeting to order, somebody has to get things going. And I think just providing for a means to determine that, clearly, anybody, once the meeting gets underway, could by motion designate somebody else to, to take it, especially if that person doesn't want to go any further. So, you know, I think that's, that's part of that rule, is that that can still happen. But at least this gives everybody a guide as to what to do. This is kind of the same thing as the reason that they swear in the vice president at the federal level first, just in case the, the president keels over right after that, they've got everything covered. So this is just making sure everything is covered.
We're not even going to touch that, unwrap that.
All right.
So I, I would move to accept the, the rules with the mayor's change.
Second.
Right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to approve the rules for 2025 and forward until changed with that addition of that rule. Discussion on the motion as the maker, Councilmember Schroeder.
No, it makes sense.
All right. As the second, Councilmember Groff, can you top that?
I think it's a good addition, and, you know, the rules have worked so far, so I don't see any reason why we need to add that anymore into it.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in, well, I should just note, I'm, I hadn't heard that there were any other suggested rule changes or additions or anything like that from council members, so everybody's cool with that. All right. We have the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Those rules are approved. I forgot to check with the public again.
There you go.
Still, still shaking his head no. All right. Now, after my earlier preview, we'll talk about liaisons from the council to various groups and committees. Mr. Tregeon, I don't know if you had anything by way of introduction. I could certainly take it as well.
All right, go right ahead.
Okay. All right. Well, each year, the city council, at the start of the year, goes through our liaisons that we, as council members, act in, you know, whether it's going to a board of another organization that the city is affiliated with, or, or other types of things. And so this is our opportunity to do that. And as, as noted, and I don't know, Mr. Tregeon, maybe we do want to at least put up the list.
Yeah, let's go down there and do that.
Yep, okay. And we've got some information as to who has been in those liaisons over the past few years. Maybe, I don't know, if that's the best one to bring up.
Yeah.
I'll start by saying I'm in kind of tradition or an official tradition, taking over the liaison positions that former council member Jason F. was.
Usually work that way, doesn't it?
Yeah, I don't know that that's exactly the, the thing, but certainly his, his activity.
Looking at the previous ones, it did appear that way, whether it's.
Maybe, maybe it worked out that way.
It did work out. It seemed to be worked out well, and for no reason, I feel.
We should discuss them all.
Sure. So specifically, you're talking about the, the city manager review committee? I'm not, I can't remember if Councilmember Ratten was on any others.
Yeah, that's the only one he was on.
Mr. Tregeon is scrambling to bring it up. Gably scrambling. Okay, so there we go. So we could just go through them from the list.
I know.
So, and to be even more clear, on that first one for the NYFS, so the term, the second term ends in June of this year. And then you're eligible for a third term under, under the bylaws of NYFS boards. So Councilmember Groff, I guess the question becomes, are you interested in being appointed to a, a third term?
Here's my thoughts on it. I'm on the executive committee till the end of June. I really think I should stay on until then. So I would finish out this year, and I could be, but I could, if someone was interested next January, that doesn't preclude me from saying, I want to, I would be willing to resign if someone could step in, because nine years on one of these is quite a bit of time, and I think it's better for boards to have a variety of opinions. But in this case, I would like to finish out this year, just because I'm on the executive committee, and we're, we're finally getting, I'm feeling like we're putting it in a really good place, so I want to leave it for somebody else. We've got the billing, you know, probably sold. It's very close to it, and things will be going very well. So those are my thoughts on it. I guess I would be willing to be, for this year at least, and then I can repeat it next year.
Well, I would love to nominate you to be on the NYFS liaison spot.
I don't know if that's how it works, but thank you.
Well, we could just double check. Is there anyone else who would like to serve in that capacity, that either be appointed to the three-year term starting in July, or, because I think we would let you finish your term, or any other appointment?
Would it make sense for you to start a third term in case things aren't wrapped up the way you had hoped?
That's what I was sort of thinking. I would just start the term, and then in January, when we do this typically, we can revisit it and talk about it, and maybe by then, maybe Matt will have some different opinions, or, you know, maybe he'll have been to our annual meeting, and it will have excited him or something, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
To replace your butt.
You were getting me excited there.
And, and just for the benefit of people knowing, those meetings are on Wednesday morning, or have they moved to a different?
They moved to Thursday morning at eight thirty, and they changed the time. They used to be at seven, and they changed it to eight thirty.
Gradually shifted to a little bit more reasonable.
Yeah.
And do you know which Thursday of the month it is?
Thursday of the month, and, well, of course, if you're not on the executive committee, you don't have to be on all those other, but you're expected to be on one other subcommittee like finance or programming or whatever.
Good information to know. So it, it sounds like for now, it looks like we'll, we'll probably go ahead and, and appoint Councilmember Groff, and we could just do this as part of our motion.
Why don't we do it all at once?
We have a resolution that will fill blanks in. Pat's diligently doing that. All right. The second one is the North Suburban Communications Commission and SAC Board, otherwise known as Nine North. I think I've been the city's representative on that board since OT six.
And I've reached out.
Not, not the one in the last century, but, but it seems like that long. And each year, it seems to default to me, and, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to sell it as, as a bad draw for people to, to get. I think it's actually an interesting, you know, function as far as communication in local communities, and also making sure that, that the cities have, have good deals with the, with the cable company or companies in terms of franchises and regulation of those. So as always, I would be open to somebody else taking that role.
And I have reached out to you and indicated I would have interest in taking on that position.
Okay. And that is six meetings a year. They're also on the third Thursday of the month, but they're 7:00 PM. And it's, I should say, generally, the third Thursday, I think their schedule has some, I have some shifting around, you know, like to get away from holidays and things like that.
How many members are there?
There are nine. So that's, you know, Arden Hills, Falcon Heights, New Brighton, North Oaks, Roseville. Used to be Shoreview, but not anymore.
Lauderdale.
Lauderdale and Mounds View and St. Anthony.
Given the limitations of my position where I don't have time during the day, I'm in a fully in-person position, it's hard for me to get away. This is one of the few that works at night, that I would, I would like to have an opportunity to take over if you're ready to give up after OT six.
Certainly, and I'd be happy to be the alternate on that, so that if we need to, you know, because we typically, they, you know, Roseville's like 38% of the vote or something like that on the board.
Oh, wow.
Maybe it's lower than that, 36%.
We should be there.
But, so it is important to have somebody there, for sure.
Okay.
All right. So why don't we look at that? The Ramsey County League of Local Governments. I'm, I was trying to remember how often and when those are, those are on Friday mornings, but I'm not sure how often they are.
Yes, well, it depends on, because if you're on all the subcommittees and stuff, it's at least once a month, sometimes twice a month, and then this one, I probably, you know, probably should stay on because they just elected me their treasurer.
Okay.
For 2026, so, you know, that comes with the job at this point.
For 2026 or 2025?
Yes, 2026.
Oh, wow.
25, I mean, sorry.
Flip your calendar, yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Okay.
So 25, so yes. So they did elect me for 2025 to be the treasurer, which means you probably have, between that and their subcommittees, you probably have to meet twice a month.
And, and what you mean is you will have to meet twice a month?
Yes, yes, yes. Thursdays typically, and then Fridays.
But the, and, and does that, is that a group where, similar to NYFS, they expect you to be on at least one committee if you're a board member?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So you're probably going to have to.
Well, and the Friday obligation is pretty, if you go to the board meeting and the other general meeting, it's like three hours, isn't it?
Yeah, and then the sub meetings, they're, they're moving that to in-person now, too, and those tend to, they all tend to be in the morning, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Good to keep in mind. Well, thank you for taking that on for the council.
So that, yes, more than happy to do it.
The Fire Relief Association is kind of ex officio. It's, you know, I think technically, we can designate somebody else on the city council, but I am, in the entire history of Roseville, I'm not sure there has been anybody but the mayor serving, so.
The mayor and the city manager.
Mayor and the city manager, correct. City manager is, is pretty much, has to, I think that's by state law, and then the fire chief, obviously. So I don't think there's any proposal for changes there. That is just for, for consistency with the discussion, that they meet on the second Tuesday of the month, six times a year, every other month. So it'll probably stay the same there. Visit Roseville Board. Councilmember Groff is, is, his term on the board goes through August of next year, and then you probably would be termed off then by the bylaws. It's two, two, three-year terms. So we really don't have to take any action at this time unless you want to defer to somebody else?
I'm fine staying on. It's, we're, we've just changed, as you all know, we just changed our CEO, so it's kind of a good bridge, and we've had some turnover on the board. So I think next year, I could step off a little early, and someone could step on. I think we should have someone else go on there probably in 2026, just because it's good to have other people thinking about this stuff rather than same members.
And I would be interested in the future if my job were to.
That one is a noon meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Noon on a Thursday or something like that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Yep. Oh, yeah, Wednesday.
In a different world, hopefully I'll have a hybrid position.
Yeah, it might work.
We'll duly note that.
Yeah, you tell my boss.
And, and I would say probably just to be respectful of their term timeframes, you know, we could certainly, in January of next year, make a designation for who would take over after the year term ends.
After the August. Okay, well, that'll work.
I think that, that probably is a good, good practice. Rice and Lepertur Alliance Board Member, so this is a little bit of a change from the past, and in fact, I'm not 100% sure that this will be what it is, because it hasn't been officially acted on yet, but they are changing from where they had like sort of an executive board that was primarily elected officials from the communities, and then a bunch of volunteer boards for a specific subject matter, like transportation and, you know, economic vitality and things like that. They're going to more of a broader, just a board, and it has representatives from the cities, but also community representatives, and they're, they're setting up sort of governance structure, so it would be typically two-year terms, and I think you'd serve two or three two-year terms. Those are typically daytime meetings, oftentimes lunchtime or just before or after, and I'm not 100% sure what day of the week they're going to be, since some of the action hasn't been taken yet. I'm perfectly happy to stay as the C's representative on there, but certainly if anybody else is interested in serving on that and is intrigued by these mysterious changes that I've been sort of shadily outlining this evening, not in, not shadily, not in full detail, you know, we can certainly talk about it. So I'll throw it up if anybody wants to, to think about getting on that board. And they, this would start March 1st, I think is their, their business year, so everything would be in place for March 1st, and I'm happy to do whatever. place for March 1st, and I'm happy to do whatever. Until then, what's the thoughts from council in terms of interest in that particular service?
I would think you should stay on there until we actually know what's happening, because that way, it's hard for people to commit then, until we know for sure what that would be.
I think that's true as well, what if they decide they don't necessarily want the mayoral or city representatives being the makeup, then if it were to change, you could step away and not feel like you've been shorted.
But I should be clear, that the proposal that's on the table is to include a city representative, probably an elected person from each city, going forward, so it still would be the case.
Oh, it still would be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it just would be in addition to these other members, so. But yeah, maybe, maybe because of this transition, this isn't the time to make a change there.
No, I don't think so, I think you've done a good job, and I think we can, unless Matt or Robin are very anxious to get.
Certainly, there might be a future opportunity.
Yeah, I think you're a future opportunity.
I mean, you live in the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, I agree with what I was saying, continuing you with it, on it, as it goes through this transition, I would immediately.
Yep.
All right. Standing Subcommittee's, if that's the right word for it, now that I look at the, one has just one member. But the city manager performance review, I think we already heard from Councilmember Bauer, some interest in that.
Yes.
And Councilmember Schroeder, you've been on it for the last two years, is that something you wanted to continue?
I'd be hap, since I've done it for two years, it might be good to be able to, you know, train Matt in, and then we can kind of do that, you know, having a new person kind of like leapfrogging like that, I think might be a good way to do it, just a thought.
Other thoughts?
Well, I think if Matt's going to be on it, Robin definitely should be, because you can't put someone new on there without some backing up. Be difficult, well, he maybe has done reviews before, I'm sure you have.
I have done many reviews.
Not my review.
That's the whole devil around.
Pat is a very difficult employee, that's why he needs five bosses.
Pat's got an opinion on this.
No opinion.
And I know Councilmember Strawn, you know, has interest in this area and subject matter, too, and had expressed some interest in this as well, so I, you know, I'll be respectful.
However, if Councilmember Bauer is interested in taking that on, I do think it's wise to have Councilmember Schroeder lead the charge, just to have that continuity, yeah.
And we can definitely, like.
And I think maybe, rather than like Councilmember Efton went on for many terms, I think maybe we could kind of have like two on, you know, and then the next one staggers or something, just to keep.
Yes.
Well, we did that before, because I've served on that.
Oh, yeah, I think a little bit of the part of that was maybe that's similar to the cable commission, that it wasn't necessarily something people were jumping to do, because we have such a difficult employee.
We had COVID in there, and lots of ARCA funds, and lots of things.
So, yeah, but, I mean, there's, yeah, we can, we can certainly look at trying to be a little more rotational on that in the future. So I'd say, we'd say Bauer and Schroeder then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As far as the next piece, you know, my part of that has been, you know, just regularly communicating with our senators and our state representatives, our county commissioner, trying to see where there's overlap. I don't know that it's been a real strong, like, I guess for me, it's, you know, reaching out to Commissioner McGuire and seeing, you know, where can we coordinate, but mostly, then it's like putting, okay, you need to, okay, you need to talk to Janice Gunlock, you need to talk with Pat Trudgeon, you know, or we need to, it was kind of like connecting each other to fill in the spots. I think it's a helpful point, but I'm not sure I'm fulfilling what the expectation is for this particular role. I don't know what that expectation is, I guess.
I was just gonna ask that.
And I think it definitely goes up and down, depending on what we're at the legislature for, because I remember you and I both going to see Senator Marty and Senator Efton, if I'm pronouncing, I apologize, but about particular issues that the city had a couple of years ago, but yeah, so I think it goes up and down, but I think it makes sense to have that continued connection, and certainly, you've got that connection, or those connections.
Yeah, and I'm happy to continue that if there's not a, someone's not dying to have that position, but I'm happy to share it as well, if someone feels connected.
All right, I think that makes sense. So we have, I think, filled all the blanks in on the resolution.
Do you want me to repeat them, just for the record, make sure, I think it's pretty clear, but.
Okay.
So for NYFS, it'd be Councilmember Graff, for Nine North, it'd be Councilmember Strawn, with the alternate Row, for the RCLLG, it'll be Councilmember Schroder, Fire Relief would be the mayor and city manager, Visit Roseville, Councilmember Graff.
And chief.
And chief, yep. Visit Roseville, Councilmember Graff, Rice-Laprender Board, Mayor Rowe, City Manager Review, Councilmember Schroder, and Bauer, and Council Rep for Legislative Work, Councilmember Strawn.
Not a lot of changes.
Some.
Do we have to move to approve that?
Yes, a motion to approve the resolution.
Moved.
All right.
Second.
Let's see here, motion by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff.
We're getting there.
Yeah. To approve the resolution outlining the designated liaisons.
Yeah, we're getting it.
Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strawn is the maker, Councilmember Graff is the secondor, any discussion from other councilmembers? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, those liaisons are approved, and staff will be communicating with those organizations as appropriate. Acting Mayor for 2025, this is by state statute, we need to designate the first alternate for mayor, essentially, and.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Graff.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Is Councilmember Graff assessing nomination?
I do, although that was interesting, because I took it last year, and thought, he never, he's never gone. On two occasions, I think.
You did such a good job this past year, that you're gonna get to do it again.
No, it was interesting, and I appreciate that support.
I could try to go on a little more.
Sorry, my voice, that might be.
So the motion then is to designate Councilmember Graff as the acting mayor for 2025, that was moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroder. Further discussion, Councilmember Schroder, did I bypass you as the maker of the motion?
I have nothing to say.
All right, anything else to add from councilmembers?
I think it makes a lot of sense to have, you know, Councilmember Parrot to it, because he's, I think he's the top guy now.
I'm the senior now.
Yeah. I was trying to be careful with that.
You can't torture Jason with that anymore.
Right, right. So you may be senior in more ways than one.
True.
All right, we've got the motion before us, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, we have designated our acting mayor. Now, on to some relatively administrative items, the first item is city council minutes, we've got our council minutes from November 25th, our EDA minutes from November 25th, our council minutes from December 2nd, and two strategic planning session minutes from October 24th and November 13th.
We probably need to.
We could do a single motion.
I don't think I was here on the 24th.
Well, you can still go to approve it.
I'll just say, I'll just say yes.
I mean, the, technically, and I say this occasionally, is the motion to approve the minutes is to prove that the minutes are an accurate representation of the meeting, and if you feel that's the case, you should not be.
Motion to approve all of the minutes as presented.
There we go.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroder, to approve all of the minutes as presented, any discussion on that motion? I'm presuming there were no corrections, anybody noted that needed to be.
Oh, thank you to the mayor for correcting a couple of things that were incorrect in my statement, so that was appreciated.
Oh, no, I try, and of course, you can do that as well. All right.
You're very good at it.
We've got the motion before us, all those in favor approving those minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, those minutes are approved. That then brings us to page two, the consent agenda, Mr. Trudgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 11A approves payments in the amount of $3,788,388.20. Item 11B approves several purchases, including the purchase of a new vehicle for the police department's community service officers, a variety of firefighter equipment, which includes a replacement command vehicle for the fire department, and electrical infrastructure for the new electric fire engine arriving later in 2025. Item 11C approves the US Bank and BMO Harris Bank as the city's official bank depository for city funds, and designates the Finance Director with the authority to make electronic fund transfers. Agenda item 11D designates the Pioneer Press as the city's official newspaper. Item 11E approves annual sign permits in 2025 for a variety of city-led and sponsored events. 11F adopts a resolution to approve the reapportionment of assessments in 2025. Agenda item 11G approves the annual contract with Northeast Youth and Family Services for its work with the Roseville community in the amount of $88,020. In addition, this action also approves an additional contract with NYFS for the Community Advocate Program, that will work directly with the City of Roseville Police Department in the amount of $24,266. Item 11H approves entering into a professional services agreement with Axtel Group to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of police resources and operational efficiency. Item 11I approves a city building official to act as the assistant weed inspector to help out the very overburdened mayor and his local weed inspector duties for the city.
2025.
Yep, yep, 25. And then, item 11J authorizes staff to seek donations to help defray the cost of city-hosted events for the community, listing of the events where the donations will be asked for is contained in the staff report, that is part of the packet.
And that is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, as indicated on the original agenda, and which is different than what is presented here, because on E, it should be 25, or 2025, on F, it should be 2025, and on I, it should be 2025.
Yeah.
That's just on the screen for our.
You know, I recycle some things sometimes.
For our people at home, but the information as presented in the actual agenda. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroder, and thank you for clarifying that. Discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm so glad you're the weed inspector.
I wish it had any other meanings that it could, but it doesn't.
We should have made Matt be the weed inspector, it doesn't work that way.
We could change it.
I actually, I presume that the mayor can designate whoever the mayor wants as the assistant weed inspector.
Careful, careful.
I'll be a little more careful what I say around here.
It's something to strive for.
That being said, we have the motion before us to approve those consent items as presented, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, those items are approved. Mr. Trudgeon, future agenda review, and if you can finish by 8:50, you will get us.
I will be quick, I'll just show the, show the slide. So, I don't have a lot on here right now, just a reminder, this Friday morning, we have our fourth strategic planning session from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the fireside room at the Oval. Did send all the council the agenda, so hopefully you got a sneak peek at that. Then next Monday, we'll be back here again, really for two separate meetings, but the same body, the EDA, city council serving as the EDA, we'll just elect officers for 2025, and then also receive the housing study update that was originally planned in November, I believe it was. And then we'll have a pretty lengthy discussion about the Maintenance Center project, all the next steps. There'll be quite a lot of information, I'll let you know that I'm not looking for any specific decision that night, but I certainly want to have conversation and direction so we can follow up and bring back additional information based on all of that.
Will the neighborhood be noticed on that?